I'd like to call the, to order this public hearing of the Champagne County Board, Thursday, May 2nd. It is now 6:07 PM. And I would like a roll call, please.
Kibler, Langenheim, Maxwell, McGuire, Michaels, Mitchell, Petrie, Quisenberry, Richards, Rosales, Schrader, Schwartz, Alex, Berksen, Carter, Cowart, Esri, Harper, Hartke, James, Jay, Mr. Chairman.
Here. Thank you. Notice of the meeting, please.
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing of the County Board, Champagne County, Illinois, will convene on May 2nd, 2013, 6:00 PM, in the Lyle Shields Meeting Room, Brookins Administrative Center, 1776 East Washington Street, Urbana, Illinois, for the purpose of receiving public comment regarding the draft Champagne County jail study.
I think a motion to accept. Mr. Esri, second. Mr. James, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like a motion for approval of the agenda, please.
So moved. Mr. Rosales, second. Ms. Berksen. I'm sorry about my bad.
I have, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is public comment and discussion. Dr. Cal, ILPP, will not be discussing the overview of the draft. He's already done that Tuesday evening, and it's been on our website for the last two days. Tonight, it's all about you, our taxpayers, our constituents, who will bring to us your comments and your questions for Dr. Cal. So with that, I'm going to start with a number system. Please take a number in the back if you wish to make a statement, and we will call the numbers sequentially. Number one, please, would you please step, bring your ticket, your card, to the table, and if you notice, the table tells you to please give us your name and your address for the record. Thank you very much.
Is there any kind of raffle number that goes with this?
No raffles, sorry. I didn't collect any money for half and half here tonight.
Good evening. Am I on?
Yes, you are.
Thank you.
As long as that red light's on.
Okay. Chairman Kurtz, members of the board, county officials, Dr. Kalmanoff Cal, fellow citizens. I am Diane Zell, president of the Champagne County affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness. We are the largest grassroots organization dealing with mental illness in the country. I am here to represent hundreds, if not thousands, of Champagne County citizens who live with the challenges of mental illness daily. According to government sources, one in five adults has a diagnosable mental illness in a given year. Thank you for the opportunity to offer feedback to the recommendations in this draft document. I am, however, greatly distressed by the impossible turnaround time for digesting and responding to this important 211-page document that will affect so many disadvantaged citizens of Champagne County for years to come. Cal makes many pointed recommendations designed to reduce use of the Champagne County jails as mental health hospitals. Despite time constraints, I wish to offer three critical recommendations for inclusion in the final report. The first will be illustrated by my personal experience. A few years ago, my loved one, who has chronic mental illness, came to my home to ask me to brew a mixture containing magic mushrooms my loved one claimed to have, saying that if I did this, my loved one could drink this mixture and be healed. I refused. And as I was attempting to transport my loved one for emergency treatment, my loved one jumped out of my car into traffic at the intersection of University Avenue and 150. I immediately sought the help of crisis intervention-trained officers in Urbana. Had my loved one been searched and found to have magic mushrooms, my loved one could and probably would have been taken to jail. Therefore, my first recommendation is that all first responders in Champagne County be trained in crisis intervention, a 40-hour training program for dealing with people who have mental illnesses. It's already offered in this county on a regular basis. Keeping mentally ill citizens out of jail saves money. Secondly, mental health services in Champagne County jails must be provided by local providers with knowledge of local offenders in order to increase the ease of inter-agency collaboration and ultimately save money. Third, Champagne County should institute an assisted outpatient treatment program, or AOT, such as the program currently being used in Texas and elsewhere, to divert repeat offenders with mental illness from the criminal justice system. It saves tens of thousands of dollars per year in that Texas county alone.
What's the name of the Texas county?
I have that with me somewhere, but I can't remember right now, but I can certainly provide that to you later. And there is an excellent video that describes the program in great detail. These three recommendations should save the county tens of thousands of dollars and improve health, as well as increase the safety for all Champagne County citizens. So, public safety sales tax money should be involved in funding these life-changing and life-affirming recommendations. Grants are immediately available through the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, a federal agency, as are private grants for technologies such as data entry. I also have specifics on that if someone cares to know. The Illinois Center of Excellence for Behavioral Health and Justice, which is a new, as of 2010, state agency, can provide technical assistance for all counties looking to implement jail diversion programs such as AOT.
Name again, the Illinois Center for?
The Illinois Center of Excellence for Behavioral Health and Justice. It's housed in Rockford, but I believe there are facilities in, I hear here in Champagne, Urbana, as well, or contacts. To paraphrase today's Frank and Ernest comic strip from the News Gazette, "I don't want to get a handle on Champagne County's juvenile, or criminal justice problem. I want to stop carrying them around." Thank you.
Do you have a question?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
You want me to leave this here?
Yes, leave the number there, please.
Just before you leave this, first, thank you.
My pleasure.
Second, you have a way to get me, right? My email address or something?
Yes.
Okay, because I would like to be sure of the references you've given me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, if you've just come in, there are numbers sitting in the back. If you wish to make a statement or a question, please take a number. Number two, please.
James Kilgore, 511 South Draper Avenue, Champagne. I'm speaking as a representative of Champagne, Urbana, citizens for peace and justice. We had quite a long meeting last night to discuss the draft report. I think we had a public meeting ourselves on the 17th where Dr. Kalmanoff spoke, and I think everyone came away from that meeting feeling extremely positive that the draft report was going to offer us many opportunities to significantly transform the criminal justice system in Champagne County. So I eagerly got that report as quickly as I could. I started reading it at 6:30 in the morning yesterday, and the first, the early chapters on risk assessment and so forth, I found were really quite excellent. But as I read deeper and deeper into the report, I started to become pretty depressed. And I, as part of an organization that has spent quite a lot of time and energy in the processes of the needs assessment and the debates and discussions around criminal justice, it seemed that there were some major things missing from this report, or some major shortcomings. And I'd like to highlight three of these. The first one is this Community Justice Advisory Board, a body of gatekeepers which has no community representation, no community oversight, no community accountability, and is basically supposed to meet in private without keeping any public record. Now, for those board members who are here, who were in the previous board, this is very much like the Jail Space Improvement Team's mode of operation, which created huge amounts of problems in terms of trying to get this whole process on board. So we really, the discussions that we had, we really felt that this body, although it's good for these parties to be working together, there has to be some kind of transparency in their operations, and they also have to be guided by some change of principles, which hasn't taken place. There has been no public discussion of transforming the criminal justice, the fundamental values of the criminal justice system. The second point that's crucial is the notion of resources. And the resource allocations are really in the recommendations. And if we follow the money in this, if we look at the resources, the biggest resource allocations in the recommendations are those for facilities. And if we are to change, if we are to transform the criminal justice system in Champagne County, we need a fundamental shift of resources away from buildings, away from incarceration, and toward community-based programs of prevention. And that statement is nowhere to be found in the report. And without that, I don't know how we can move in a different, in a different direction. And the most troubling part of that is that in the recommendations for facilities, there are 14 specific recommendations, which range from building jail cells to a pod for women to a minimum-security facility, to even refurbishing of the entryway for the satellite jail as a process of, quote, "rebranding." Yet nowhere is there an allocation, a recommendation for an allocation of funds for facilities in the community around community-based mental health, such as a 24-hour mental health crisis center, such as detox centers, such as transitional housing for people re-entering from prison and jail. So without a fundamental shifting of resources and without a commitment to that in the draft report and in this process, we're really not changing a whole lot, and we're lending, we're putting ourselves in a position where we can be spending millions and millions on construction and very little by way of program. Then my last point, which is a shorter one, but equally important, is the question of the philosophy. We need, this report needs to express the need for a change in philosophy in the criminal justice system in the county. Now, the overall recommendations which come early in the report, recommendation number seven says that the county board needs to manage the tension between justice conservatism and fiscal conservatism. I think that's a fundamental misrepresentation of where the fundamental tension lies. The tension here is between the old and the new. The tension here is between a punitive form of justice and a restorative, a transformative, a rehabilitative, a developmental form of justice that's oriented toward seeing jail and incarceration as the last resort. And so that needs to be addressed philosophically in the final report. There's been a huge amount of work that's gone into the report, a huge amount of energy by people from the community, by board members, by the ILPP and other people. And we want to honor all the energy that's gone into that by making sure that what we end up with represents a fundamental transformation in the way things are done, and that we don't just end up spending millions on construction and having simply nice statements and a little bit of money directed at community-based programs and prevention. Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't.
I just wonder what you think about that. I'd be able to respond.
Yes, oh, absolutely. Cal would like to respond.
You can sit down and get comfortable, but I just want to respond to Mr. Kilgore's statement in a couple of ways. First of all, I hope I'm not alone in the room as being a flawed person. This is not a perfect report, and the three things that you think are missing are...
Excuse me, Cal. Get a little closer to the mic.
The three points that you made that are missing are missing. So let's not shy away from saying that. And will be addressed. Now, will they be addressed the exact eloquent and parallel way that you stated them? Probably not. But will they be addressed damn right? And I guess I want to hint at least two of them, because I think that the points are too important to just let go by. It won't take me very long. On the issue of Cjab, I didn't get a chance the other night to elaborate about Cjab, because I couldn't elaborate on anything. Say, Diane, could you tilt your head slightly the other way so I can see Mr. Kilgore there? Because it makes me feel better to look him in the eye.
What's Cjab?
Cjab, Criminal Justice Advisory Board. It's like a management cabinet of the three constitutional electeds, four police chiefs, a board chair, and a university person, people who can be considered conceptually as gatekeepers to the overall criminal justice system, although they come from different jurisdictions and different branches of government. And that's the problem with the criminal justice system, is they never talk. And your great advantage here in Champagne County is that your president, your presiding judge has pulled the prosecutor and the sheriff together, surrogates for the rest of them, and talks. And the sheriff talks to the chiefs, and there is quite a lot of that kind of management happening informally. And what I'm trying to do is formalize it a little bit more. Now, that said, I'm going to write this thing with an eye towards what you said and an eye towards the energy in this community for what you call transparency, and I call citizen participation, and I hate to use the word "all that," because it makes it sound like it's not important. To me, it's the heart and soul of our country. So don't miss me. But I'm going to have to figure out a way to get my cake and eat it. These guys and women have got to be able to, as my wife and I do, talk about the kids without the kids in the room in order to have an intelligent family decision. And it's not possible sometimes in front of the kids, because they're invested. And there's an analogy there that I don't want to hear anybody think of as patronizing about citizenship.
Stop that. Oh, my goodness.
Because I think the citizen input is what caused this study. And I think the citizen input is what caused this particular recommendation. So I take your point, and I have it as a personal challenge to figure out how to meet the competing demands of what I think will work, to manage the criminal justice system cost-effectively, and keep crowding down, and allocate scarce resources over the whole range of the system. But I take your point. The second thing that's missing is the resource reallocation, and I think it's a fair, no, it's an understated criticism on your part of a flaw in a draft, which is I price a bunch of buildings, but I don't price a bunch of programs. And I don't want to bother you with why I didn't get to do that, but believe me, I knew I didn't do that, and I believe it's a deep flaw in the draft, and of course it will be fixed. Meaning, you can't provide an action plan for what to do without proposals for all these things, programs and services and buildings, and pros, cons, costs, and impacts of each. Three, philosophy. I don't think that the old gets thrown out and the new comes in. That's not the world we live in. Change is gradual, and change is slow, sometimes torturously so. Can take six years sometimes. Terrible change. So I think you have to look at the situation as restorative justice is alive and well in this country, and it's a philosophy and a theme that is inadequately treated in this report. So I take your point. But it's not an all-or-nothing deal, and I have to work that one through, too. That's why we're having this here. And it's not the only time that these issues are being discussed, and I compliment you for your feedback and appreciate the input.
I'd also like to say that I know someone here said that this was a very short span between the draft and today. Dr. Kalmanoff, I had been talking today prior to this, and he's willing to come back for another public hearing. He wants to get as much input from the public as absolutely possible, and he's overemphasizing the public participation area, and that's why tonight you'll have this opportunity, and perhaps many, a number of others, to be able to put input until the final draft is ready.
There is a problem with that, though, that if I come back, I'm planning to come back with the final. If I come back for a public hearing, you want the final without me? Maybe that's the way to do it. I think that might be the way to do it. We're going to have to talk that out, Deb Bucy and I, and you and I, and other, because I can't spend the rest of my May and June coming back and forth to Champagne when, on our end, the job is spent and paid for and done. We have to finish it right. We have to do it right. And it's very important that it's not done. But I can only come back so many times.
Okay. Number three, please.
Sorry about that. My name is Joyce Mast. I live at 607 Southwest Lawn Avenue in Champagne. My concern is with the report is allocations and some better notion of reentry programs. Everyone who comes into the county jail will be leaving the county jail. We are not prepared to keep them from keeping to come back to the county jail. We need something besides a minimum-wage job. We need some training. We need to make sure people have their GEDs. We need to make sure they have some skills so they can get a decent job else. It's too discouraging. They lose it. And I am personally acquainted with people who have simply done something to get themselves back in jail because they didn't have the skills. Having been in jail for a while, they didn't have the skills, or that's probably why they got there in the first place, to make it in the world. I know of a program which is very well-developed. It's in New York City. It's run by the Fortune Society. They, the Fortune Society, they employ in their program people who have been in jail. They help them. They help them get their GEDs. They help them work out things with their families. Say, they've come back. Say, if it's a guy, their wife is with somebody else, they've got kids, or if it's a woman. They help work with family relationships. They help, they help get people so they can do something with their lives, so that, in fact, being jailed isn't just something where you throw them in there because they broke the law, but it's an opportunity for them to turn around in their lives and make better choices. That needs to be in the report. And we need to see funds for reentry programs. allocations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to speak here? Number four, please.
I'm Eleanor Evans. My address is 2711 Carrollton Drive, and I have a story to tell you. I have a friend that was a single mother. She has a 46-year-old son. He grew up with a dentist father who was violent, alcoholic, tried to shoot his mother and his stepmother. He spent many of his teenage years trying to protect family members by emptying the handguns before his father got home from his dental practice. He suffers from PTSD. He inherited his father's alcoholism and has been intoxicated many times, been in ER, run up thousands of dollars that the family couldn't pay. So it's cost the community. He's very intelligent, and he's in jail. He'll probably be returned to jail, and if we had these other programs, he might make it. It's a loss, and he's giving up. And that's my story.
I want to make a quick comment.
Okay.
The next person should come up in the meanwhile, but I just want to respond so we can sort of save time here.
Number five.
I've gotten a lot of feedback in the last couple of days about the issue of the impact of the criminal justice system on families. And I'm looking at the report and trying to figure out how to organize it to be more coherent on that issue. So I take your point, and I just want to make sure you know you're not the only voice on this point.
Hi, my name is Mark Ensland. I live at 207 West Indiana Avenue in Urbana, and actually connected with what you just brought up, Cal. I'm partially speaking on behalf of some members of CU Citizens for Peace and Justice who are specifically concerned with issues of gender, women, and families in the jail, and then partially speaking on behalf of other parts of that group, CU Citizens for Peace and Justice. I'll try to be brief and coherent as I can. And I know that this, one of the people that I'm representing here, Sophia Lewis, has contacted you, I think, maybe. So I think the issues have come to you, Cal, but I also wanted to let the county board members who are here know that among the concerns have to do with women in the jail who are mothers, and the complex interactions that happen with someone who's jailed when you've got children to take care of, if you're the primary caretaker. And these include interactions with DCFS. And Sophia is part of a, has been organizing on for women who feel like their children have been taken away from them unjustly, and that doesn't have to do with the jail. That has to do with another, another unit entirely. But these things interact, and so it would be good if, both in the report and then in what the county does with that report, that there's some explicit directions as to how such difficulties can be taken care of. I know there was an issue of if video visits are implemented, that may increase the opportunities for mothers to visit with their children while they're incarcerated. But there's also the concern that it doesn't substitute for face-to-face physical visits. And then my point, Mark Ensland's point about this, is overall, and I've addressed the county board about this before, I think that we over-incarcerate. And if there are ways that can be, both in the philosophies that are in the report and in the specific guidelines and implementations that come out, non-jail remedies for social problems. And I tend to agree with James in relation to the punitive philosophy. I don't think punishment is really, it's not foremost in my mind of what criminal justice should be about, and rather should be trying to address the peace and happiness of all the citizens here. And so if there are specific components that can come into the recommendations that would... would look at particular kinds of redress that say, oh, this, under our current system, we jail people. But if there's a way to not have people in jail, that can avoid some of these compounding problems where it's not just the person in jail who gets punished, but the members of Another whole, is there something else I wanted to say about their issue? There are, oh yeah, something else. The section in the report, I think, is gender issues in relation to the jail. Another gender issue that I don't think has come up at all is how the county will treat transgendered people who may enter into the criminal justice system. And it's good to think through this rather than have it surprise you. In the school that I run, I was a transgender student and I have known someone in my town who was a friend of, family members of mine who was disowned by her parents because, you know, after she came out as transgender. And the holistic view is what I'm asking people to take into account and the, not the bureaucratic view. And bureaucracy can get really tricky. I sat in on a case of a person from Rantoul where in the middle of the night when he was arrested, there was, actually, at the point of arrest, there was a mistaken identity. And so in the middle of the night, as he's being checked into the jail and he's got in his mind that he should be at work at 6:00 the next morning and is that going to be possible? He's confronted with, do I sign as this wrong person or do I try to address the mistaken identity? And that was a double bind that came about partially from the overall mindset that said, oh, we've got a criminal, a potential criminal on our hands rather than we've got a person with a tricky problem. And the more specific things that can go into this plan that will be thinking through the trickiness of people confronting law enforcement and the legal system and in the whole of their lives where we're trying to help people solve problems rather than we're trying to treat people as problems. And then one last thing that I'm now putting as a afterthought, but it is not an afterthought, it's one of my main motivations in coming here, is what has, gets called the issue of racial disparity, could also be called racism, and that just the sheer numbers is, I think, viewed by some as, well, if more people of a certain race commit crimes, then of course that will be reflected in incarceration. And I just want to say, no. That is a sign of a huge problem that needs to be solved. And I think there are ways, it's a huge problem in our country, but there's also ways that can specifically on the county level and at the jail level be reducing that disparity. And I think there are some recommendations in the report and I think there can be more that, and along the lines of what I was talking about, of trying to decarcerate, trying to not think of, think of non-jail options.
You going to send me the more?
I will, to the extent that I can. I mean, that involves, for instance, taking into account the drug, the war on drugs, which many people have said is a flawed policy. It's a policy level that the county doesn't deal with on that level, but there, there are ways in which on individual cases, people are coming in with drug problems, alcohol problems. And there are some little steps in that direction that need to be strengthened. Thanks. And one other thing is, I would like that this process has more input from county board members, if that's possible, at some point in the meeting.
That was Tuesday night.
Oh.
We had the board.
Sorry, I missed that, but okay.
Let me also just add to that last, that I've been talking to county board members straight through the last two days.
And that's great. And I want the community to be.
And two and three. And even got one of them to buy me lunch.
Fantastic. I'm not saying they're not dialoguing, but more, the community involvement is a big thing for me and even after whatever comes about is done, there should be some mechanisms for continuing the community involvement.
There should be a mechanism. Thank you.
Thanks.
Number six, please.
Don't ask me how I became number six. It was all messed up back there. So apparently God wanted me up there.
Hi, my name is Patsy Howell. I live at 117 Broadway in Urbana, downtown Urbana. And I have several concerns. One, I want to thank you for all the flowery things in the report. But as women, we know that after you get flowers, what happens? And I think that that happened as we went to the recommendations. There was a lot of nice things said. There was a lot of things pointed out. There were some things that, you know, seemed to speak to some of the things at the library we talked about because I also, after the library, felt a little bit better. But the recommendations, I have some problems with. First, I have problems with the amount of time. I've been an organizer for a long time. This little tactic is not something new. In 1970, I worked in a Head Start program to help the teachers who were getting treated badly. I went to their meeting because in Head Start, you know, parents have to participate. And so the head of the program had a nice, nice little set of parents that were part of the program, but it is low income. The women there were hardworking, had lots of kids. So she come in, the first meeting I went to, to talk about the teachers' problems. She came in and in front of all of us, she put 50-page document and said, look over this and this is what I think we should do. And of course, they said, okay, Ms. Buchanan, whatever you say. There's a problem with putting a 200-page document in front of a community. Pardon me? A 200-page document in front of a community and giving them a very, very brief period of time to go over that, to look at it. I think that what happened was that there, that you, you really didn't want community involvement. You didn't really want the opinions of people that this is going to affect their lives. So that's, that's one statement I want to make. I feel that it was a political technique and I think it was wrong. The other thing, okay, there's several other points and it's develop new organizational mechanisms, what James was talking about, the Criminal Justice Advisory Board. I have a real problem, of course, I'd have a real problem with that. You know, I'm a radical and don't particularly like authority. But the problem is, these are the people that have been running the criminal justice. These are people that have, you know, we know it's broken because we see recidivism. Is that the word? Recidivism? That's a hard word. So, you know, we see people are going back in and we see some of the mean mothers you're putting out here on the streets, okay? Because they didn't get no programs. They only got all the things that happened to them in jail. So we know it's not, it's not working, the criminal justice. These are the same people, okay? And so why would we do the same thing again? Why would we have the same gatekeepers? Why would we have the same people to policy make? The other thing is politically, to have a group that you don't know, there's no minutes, there's no recordings, there's no video cameras. That's been done many times too. Many years, we've got that one good person on the school board, that one good person on city council. And then we hear, everybody else went to lunch at the country club and they weren't invited and that's where the policies was made. So this is, this is not a good policy to have any group that's taking care of public agenda that we can't know what they're saying. And that just tells me, if people don't want you to know what they're saying, they're saying something wrong. Usually the N-word or something else. Usually racism or some, something that they would not like, that's not politically correct. So I have a problem with that part. I also have a problem with develop a, okay, I'm not going to read that. Articulate the purpose of the jail and its place in the continuum of graduated sanctions. Okay, the part that sticks out to me, okay? But the chief advantage is more, not less public safety, accompanied by improvements in the social fabric where crime and victims reside. So is that, this is a question. Are you saying that there should be more oversight, more monitoring in communities, poor communities, third world communities? Okay, so that's how I read it. That's why we need time to really understand this report because I think that it reads like that. I think that it reads that instead of having, you know, if you're a young black kid living up north or you're living over in Scottswood and you see the police constantly, okay? And neighborhood, my daughter, my grandkids never see a police car, okay? But, you know, so, oh, we should have more police cars? We should have more police there? No, that's a problem right there. That's like putting a whole community that hasn't even done anything in jail. Okay? So that was one thing that bothered me. The other thing was the resource constraints often by the state have forced painful cuts and reduced staff resources in areas of Champaign that they cannot afford. Okay, today I just found out the library hours have been cut. I'm on Section 8, my rent went from zero to $200. These are just in the few, last few days. So we're seeing cuts and I mentioned that at the library, we're seeing cuts everywhere. Childcare, healthcare, mental health, okay? And you stay here, you know that. But yet you're proposing to spend more money to incarcerate people? I know you don't want to incarcerate people. You want to get pod, I don't know what you want, but anyway, the bottom line is if you spend money, you're going to incarcerate people. The other thing that bothers me is address the neglect of facilities and overall management of the system. Okay, maybe, maybe I don't understand how life works, but if you have people neglecting the system and not managing it well, and anywhere in here does it say that you want to, you know, deal with those people, train those people, get rid of those people, whatever? Even New York came out and said, our cops are lazy, okay? So how much sense does it make to put money in a system that's already neglected its facilities? From my understanding, the jail was built in 95 and now you said yourself, it's, you know, it's horrible and fallen down. So what are we going to build in 2014 and, and then, you know, a few years later, oh, it's been neglect. You don't, you don't keep throwing good money after bad, okay? So these are some of my comments. I'm glad I got to voice them. I really hope that you extend the date, that, you know, that the public, the constituency of the county board, that the county board themselves can honestly, and I know you're not supposed to talk, but has everybody here read the report? Can you raise your hand? No, you can't.
No, please, thank you. This is public. Board is here to observe and listen.
Okay. So, okay. As-salamu alaikum, which means peace be with you. Thank you.
Wait, wait.
A word, a word or two of response. Lots of people have read this report cover to cover on the county board. The way I can tell is by sitting across from them and going over their notes as we go page by page by page and you're looking at a tired puppy. Now that doesn't mean that they're walking on water or making the right calls. I just said one thing, they've read it.
Okay.
That doesn't mean all of them have read it and I'll bet you there's somebody sitting around here who hasn't read a page. But the point is, a lot of them have read it. I also, I take your point, the most important point for me is the lack of time that you experience. And I've heard that and I have, I have to sort of figure that out. It's not a money thing for me, but it is a matter of how many times am I going to fly back here and am I going to be able to do with the tickets that I got to go take my family on vacation? It's that selfish. But I'm going to work this through and I have heard you.
Okay. Can I just ask, was it your decision to move things along so fastly or was it the board's decision?
Well, actually, my original request was that it be a seven-day period from the draft to all the comments being in to do a final because when you open it up to a longer period, it tends to only come at the end anyway. And my experience is 400 counties long. So I do think that in this county, for the level of public interest and participation, and if I can say this without anybody jumping on me, I don't see a guillotine coming down at us about anything at the moment where we have to get this, this thing wrapped up and finished in the next half hour or the British are coming. So my view is to figure out a way within the timeframe that is accommodating to people's lives, including my own, to extend some sort of feedback period or whatever, maybe to can the public events that I'd be at, at the end and let the board front the report then and me come back at another, I don't know yet, but I hear you is the main point I wanted to make.
I mean, I don't, I don't know. I mean, right now, it's this county that's going to be neglecting.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Number seven, please. Number seven.
How you doing, Cal? Good to see you again. My name is Marla Mitchell. I'm the director of the prison ministry at Mont Olive Missionary Baptist Church here in Champaign. I live at 1220 Joanne Lane in Champaign-Louis. I got a couple of things for you, Cal. The first thing is, it's kind of reiterating what was said earlier about the amount of time to really sit down, read through, try to digest and then respond to the report, no more than 48 to 50 hours. So with that being said, I would like to request your presence for another board meeting that's going to be sponsored by my church, the NAACP and the CCAP. That's the first thing. Now through this report, there's, back maybe a week and a half ago, we spoke at the library and I asked you about the racial disparity piece. Now as I read through the report, I noticed the verbiage about the appearance of racial disparity. Now I was, that, there was some concern there from me because, you know, coming, a black man reading this report and looking at the figures and being part of those statistics and those impacts and those outcomes personally, and then I read something that says the appearance of racial disparity. It bothers me. And it bothers me because in the last five years, I've been stopped and traffic stopped nine times. Now during these traffic stops, I was given tickets each and every time. And one in particular, I was stopped for jaywalking. So you made some great points when I read through this and you pointed out all the findings about jaywalking, the amount of arrests, the amount of stops, who's over in the county jail. Those are facts and figures and you can't argue with the data, the bottom line outcome, the impact data. But the verbiage about the appearance is what really bothers me. Because I'm here to tell you, it's not the appearance. That's exactly what's happening. That's the data. That's the reality of it. And one of the questions that I asked you was about the racial disparity task force. Now in your findings, you mentioned all the data and then in your recommendations, you went through and you made some bullet points as far as more research about racial disparity. Now back in 2004, in this board, there was a proposal for Mason Tillman, which is a research group that come, to come in and deal with the racial disparity. That was dismissed for some reason. That was dismissed and that was a decade ago. Number two, bias-free police training. Bias-free police training. Great point because that's where it starts. I mean, that's where, that's just where it is, the police training. Now I know a little bit about racism, racial disparity and all that and it's, unfortunately, it's embedded in our community. Number three, the micro-level police monitoring. Number three, the micro-level police monitoring, meaning we need to watch over, or police the police, in a sense. That's what that means. That's how, that's what I interpret that to be. And then, throughout the report, you mentioned the RISNIES assessment tools, which are, I think, is, you know, is pretty good. And then also to establish practice and prosecution assessment to assist state's attorney. That's another good thing. But as I read through the report with all these recommendations, you didn't mention who's going to be the taskmasters. And that was my piece two weeks ago, when I spoke to you via satellite or via Skype about creating a racial disparity task force. That was not mentioned in this draft, and I personally would like to see that, because if we don't have that, we just got a bunch of recommendations.
So, can you elaborate on what that means, just in a few words?
There's some best practices across the country that uses the racial disparity task force.
So you're talking about what is being done?
Exactly.
Being done here? Okay, no, I understand you now.
Example, if you all want to research this, you can go to Dane County, which Mr. Kalmanoff was part of a research group back in 2010, I do believe, 2009, 2010. So they're using this practice as well.
Yes.
So I would like to see that placed into the next report, is that we have a taskmaster, something similar to what is being done, because throughout your report, you mentioned best practices.
And there's one that you don't see.
Excuse me?
And there's one that you think you don't see.
Here?
Yeah.
Oh.
You don't see it in my report.
Not, not, not the recommendation, no. Not in the recommendations part.
I understand your point.
Okay. So, with that being said, I'll be reaching out to you, trying to get you back in here. I know you've got a tight schedule in the next couple of weeks. I'm not exactly sure what the deadline is, as far as what the county board has set, as far as when we as the public have a chance to kind of, you know, wrap up things, where you can, where we can move forward to the next steps. That would also be another piece of information that I would like to be privy to, because like I said, we got this report on Tuesday, and then we're here as a group on Thursday, basically. And I think that's a very, very short window.
I'm going to agree with that point that I've agreed with other people that have made, again, and it's not a purposeful, short string. And as the chairman just said quietly under his breath, there is no deadline. And in fact, there is a deadline, because there's a contract, and on the other hand, I don't really worry about that, because when the contract's over, we get paid. But I don't need to get paid until we're done.
But we, the public, are worried about it.
No, I understand, let me keep going for a minute here. The only thing I'm caring about right now is my summer plans with my family. And I don't want this thing to be deep into June. I think there's plenty of time for us to figure out a way to give more time if there's a feeling of impatience. And I want to say, without pulling anybody's covers in here, the public comments about we don't have enough time are mimicked by people sitting around you on the board. I've had a number of people say, what the hell is this? We're supposed to talk to you about something that we got a half an hour ago? And so I'm hearing you, and I will work with the folks who are paying me to figure out a way to make this work, to encounter and encompass and try to take care of the interests you're describing.
Got you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number eight, please.
I've got my notes on here, I'm not going to be checking my email or anything. Rafter Ferguson, 605 and a half West Indiana Avenue, Urbana. I've got a few, a few comments that I want to make. One is that, I guess it starts with the position on racial disparity that's being taken in the report, and it's, I want to, I guess actually compliment you, Cal, that it's sort of a masterpiece of diplomacy, in which you say that, if I can give the Cliff Notes version, there's no evidence for racial bias, but because there is a perception of racial bias, we have, we should do a bunch of the same things that we would do if there were evidence for racial bias, thereby, it seems to me, sort of pragmatically, avoiding, you know, ruffling any feathers, and also appeasing community calls for action on racial disparity. And a lot of the proposals that are made in that context are, I think are really progressive and acceptable to me, certainly. And if these proposals were contextualized by changes in the relationship between the criminal justice system and the community, then I would actually probably be happy with that, that super diplomatic framing of the issue. If there were some structures that were in place or that were being proposed for ongoing community input into and review of the process of addressing racial disparity or the perception of racial disparity, then we could have some assurance that the discussion was proceeding in a way that was productive, but, but there isn't. Instead, we have the advisory council that is, won't be publishing minutes, and is not open to the public, and in fact, it's confidential, so no one on it is even allowed to discuss what happens. And to me, this is not a recipe for creating sort of meaningful movement on these issues that are, that are really challenging and that require community ownership and participation in order to move forward in a meaningful way. And it's interesting to me that this, this kind of structure is, is sort of kind of the ILPP thing. In looking at, not necessarily on racial disparity issues per se, but in looking at past ILPP draft reports in Salt Lake City, and Dane County, and Sedgwick County, and St. Lucie County, Florida, and Green County, Missouri, they all contain the suggestion, under slightly different language, for an executive council that's, has no community stakeholders in it, and has bylaws that specifically exclude any kind of public or community review of that process. And it seems to me that the, the sort of implicit idea in this is that if we just give more power to the experts, and we give more experts to the people in power, that that will actually be enough to solve all the problems that we have. And, and this, even though we've got these great proposals that are really emerging from the fields of sort of community policing and restorative justice, these individual proposals that we can see map onto the concerns of a different way of doing justice, they're contextualized with this attitude about the community that flies in the face of those frameworks. And it's like we want to have criminal justice that substantively builds public safety, but we don't actually want the public to be very involved in that. And I would say that in order to build trust, there have to be structures and processes in place to make public input and review possible, and that without building trust, none of these efforts will have any leverage at all. And so for me, the competing philosophies are not between restorative and punitive justice, but the sort of larger questions about the role of the community in democracy. And I know that the argument against democratic participation in the implementation process is for efficiency, right? It's, it's because the, you know, the kids will just get in the way when the parents are making important decisions. And I think that we should question that. If you, to the degree that I've been able to find kind of follow-up audits on past ILPP recommendations, what you find consistently is that a very small minority of recommendations have actually been followed through on. And Cal, you made the point in the community meeting at the library, that of course, you can't guarantee outcomes, you can give us a report, and then it's up to us to take that on and follow through with that. I agree. And I think if the proposal doesn't recommend specific structures and processes for substantive, meaningful community involvement in the process, then we can, then we can count on the process not succeeding and implementing no more than a small minority of these initiatives. And meaningful participation of the community requires that, one, that we don't talk about them like they're children, and, and if I could just recommend to you, as someone who practices diplomacy very well, that you could just lose that metaphor of parents and children, and make a, make a better case for your proposal. So, one, it requires that we don't talk about the community like they're children, that need to be managed by expert parents, and two, that there are actual explicit structures and processes in place by which the community can take ownership over that process of transition to a new way of doing justice. And so my question to you is, how will the final draft propose these structures?
Yeah.
And how far away from the paternalism can we move in between now and the final draft?
Okay, let me, let me try to respond. First of all, my hat is off to you in terms of the articulate, clear, unargumentative, but very clear presentation. I do think, before I got to town, I still have been working on this issue of how is CJAB to relate to the community? And how is the community to relate to CJAB? And I will address that issue. I'm not going to sit here and tell you how, because I have to work it, and I have to work it myself, and it may not be apparent to you that I work independently of the guy to my right, and the people to my left, and the people behind me, but I do. Now, on the issue of paternalism, I'm not going to abandon that metaphor at all. I am, at great pains, often tried to be diplomatic, because I usually am walking between elephants, and it pays to be light on your feet. But you have to start off with a different paradigm, I believe, to accuse this of paternalism. You have to start off by the fact that you have an elected judiciary in this country. It's insulated quite a bit by the way that the elections go thereafter, but it is what it is. I didn't bring it to town myself, it was here when I got here, and it's in the same place in every town in the country.
And if it was adequate to the, if that level of democratic participation was adequate to the problems that we faced, then we wouldn't have the problems that we face.
I don't know that. I don't know that, and I don't want to go off on that, because that's a political science debate of great interest, but not relevance to this right now. It is what it is. Give me that.
Well, I can't argue with that.
Thank you. We also have an elected, we have an elected prosecutor who is the chief law enforcement officer of the jurisdiction, the captain of the criminal justice ship, who elects, who decides where, where is Julia? Who elects to decide where to take the awesome power of the force and might of the state and the county, and the government, and the cops, and point it, and enforce the law. And we have an elected sheriff. So, there is your community participation as well, because they were elected by the community. Now, if you want to talk about paternalism, talk about a system where there ain't no CJAB. And there are, just to play the game, the three family members are divorced. The judge doesn't talk to the DA. He or she is so pissed off because, and the DA doesn't talk to the sheriff, and I have been to hundreds, at least 100 counties, where there's at least two of those three people who literally don't talk. And Deb Bucy, who does the budget around here, will tell you how people act when it comes time to get theirs. So there is a lot of turf in this game that is on the other side of the curtain from the one you're talking about. The reason the parents want the kids out of the room is because it's impossible to make a forward decision for anybody's benefit, unless you can have a quiet conversation and figure out what people can agree on.
That's also a political science debate.
Absolutely. I take your point.
There are counterexamples to that.
I take your point.
In this country, all over the world.
I take your point. But the last point I want to make is, and this is important to people here, the reason you see that CJAB concept in so many of ILPP's reports, is because it works. There's nothing more effective than something that really works. So if you take a jail that is overcrowded, and is over-incarcerating, and over-incarcerating in this country means over-incarcerating black people. And if you take a jail that is overcrowded, and overcrowding in this country means over-incarcerating mothers and fathers, and corrosive to family systems, by definition. And you then allow it to keep growing. I'm working on one right now in Albuquerque. I don't want to even tell you the story, but just promise you, an unmanaged criminal justice system where there are three czars who were elected and have all the power, can you say "all the power"? Lawfully, is the status quo. CJAB is the reform, because it forces them to sit at a table, a round table, with data about average length of stay, by charge and release mode, who's coming through the system, who's in the jail, how's it being used, where's the stoppages and the gaps and the problem, and solve coordination and management problems, and then you find out you don't need a new jail? Because the crowding shrinks, and the tax load shrinks, and that works. It's hard to get too excited about the fact that their meetings may be in private, but their outcomes will be obvious. And so, I have my own expertise that I bring. I don't ask you to honor it, but I ask you to hear it. And the reason it keeps coming up is because it is best practice. It works. Don't work every time. I've set a bunch of them up that didn't work. I have facilitated one for 10 years that worked like spit, and then maybe it's collapsing now. It's not a neat, pretty picture. But criminal justice starts off with bad behavior and conflict. That's what it starts off with. And how does society deal with it? You measure a society by how well it deals with it. And I leave you all to measure this society by how well it's dealing with it, but on the issue of CJAB, I just want to explain myself, not try to further persuade you or justify, but just so that you understand, it isn't some sort of just trick, but it works. That's the reason.
Sometimes.
Well, that's true. Sometimes it doesn't work. Sometimes nothing works. In New Mexico, they've had a jail overcrowding lawsuit for 20 years now by the federal courts. It started off at 1,100 inmates overcrowded in the city jail. Population hasn't changed, crime hasn't changed, they built a new jail to get out of that lawsuit. Guess what? They picked the lawsuit up and took it to the new jail. Now we're at 2,200 inmates, lawsuit is still going, 90 lawyers have cycled through the case, second homes, college educations, and the lawsuit continues, and the inmates are crowded, and the system grows and grows and grows out of the greed of bureaucrats. An unmanaged system. CJAB, I've been battling to get one there. If I can get one there, it might work. Maybe it won't.
Thank you. We appreciate your input. Number nine, please.
Did you get cut off that last moment?
I'm sorry.
Well, my, the questions that I had ended with were, how is the, how is your final draft going to incorporate meaningful substantive community involvement? Because whether or not CJAB has worked in a lot of locations, I think that in order to repair the rift between the community and law enforcement in this county, a meaningful transition is not going to happen without community, some degree of community ownership over that process.
My answer is two words. It is. But how it is, I'm not going to tell you right now, because I haven't worked it out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Number nine.
Thank you so much for your, thank you so much for your time, and good evening to everyone. Since we were talking about parents and children, I second the previous community members' suggestion that you definitely need to find another metaphor, because children do not choose their parents, but we choose our elected officials. And we know that by choosing the elected official, our job is not done. We know what this Congress, for example, is dysfunctional, right? And we have chosen it. And how much control do we have over our congresspeople? Almost none. And because there are other forces who actually are more powerful than we are, and they exert more power over their, over our congresspeople. So, I guess the reason... So, I guess the reason all of us are a little bit apprehensive about this advisory board is that even when a lot of them are elected officials, we really cannot trust them, not as individuals. They all might be good people. But we know that without supervision, without transparency, elected bodies do not necessarily have the best interest of their entire community in mind. So, in one way or another, this advisory board has to have some mechanism so that the community can have communication with it, have influence over it, and if they find out that they are, they are basically considering other forces' interests in mind, then they could change the direction that the board is taking. So, what, yeah, I mean, some, yes, try to. Yes, exactly. Try to. So, I think that's very important. And just generally, you know, what I wanted to say is that I read your report, and I learned from it a lot, not being an expert myself in these issues, but, and also, I was impressed by it. And as a result, when I got to the recommendation section, I just thought that the two had been written by two different entities, in the sense that the report was very exact. It has figures, facts, graphs, statistics, but there was nothing that reflected the report in the section that was your recommendations. And by that, I mean that recommendations are effective only if they can make very specific suggestions that would address the reports that has been written. But we don't really see that. And I have an example. I don't want to read your own report to you, but as far as racial disparity is concerned, for example, it's just mind-boggling. You know, I hadn't realized all these, some of it, of course, we all know, but not all of it. And you say that the percentage of blacks in the jail, 60%, well exceeded the county's general black population, which is 12.7%. This we know, everybody knows. Furthermore, while blacks were more likely to be brought into custody compared to whites, 57% versus 40%, which is shocking, they were also more likely to remain in custody, and this is very crucial, 64% versus 35% when the tracking and profile samples are compared side by side. So, this is not appearance of racial disparity. I'm not talking about racism. I'm just sticking with the phrase racial disparity. Your figure shows that it's not an issue of disparity, but actual, factual disparity at each level. So, when we get to the recommendation, I really want to see these statistics somehow be considered in the recommendation, and I want to see a recommendation that would attempt to address these disparities here. So, that's, but when we get to that part, of course, you know, I just can, I wish I had copies so I didn't have to go down, you know, it would take a while to get down. But I explain what I mean, it's not, try to paraphrase what you have said. The first bulleted section says that if it is warranted, you're suggesting that there should be research, maybe, that you don't say even there should, you know, you said, you recommend if it is warranted to have some research done on the issue of racial disparity. I mean, I may not be quoting you correctly, but warranted, I mean, these are not, these are, this call for things not really happening, because maybe people, some people would think that they are not warranted. And what is the recourse of the community to show that it's warranted? Or you talk about a research is needed to look into this perceived racial disparity. There is racial disparity. Research is fine. People can do research, but it just sounds like one of those things, you know, creating a committee to, you know, supervise a committee that is supervising another committee, you know, it just rest ridiculous. Action has to be taken, because there are statistics that you mentioned yourself there. So, this is what I think has to be there, concrete recommendations, and not just words that nobody can be held responsible for after you left. So, basically, this is, in general, what I wanted to say. And another point that is very close to my heart is the fact that you also mentioned that there is such a high correlation between unemployment and lack of education and various offenses, and, you know, just direct correlation. So, the less educated people are the, more chances that they would commit an offense and be arrested and be jailed. So, when we know this fact, what we want out of our justice system is to also provide a situation, both money and facilities, to address this problem. Unemployment, not just.
Address employment and education?
Not, not by overall, you know, even President Obama cannot do that. But what I'm saying is that at least, you know, have places where they can, you know, like, attach to the prison system, to the jail system, to have opportunities for learning for, so that those who are in jail can learn skills, can learn, get their GEDs, or, you know, have opportunities to improve themselves. So, when they are getting out, they would be more marketable, better suited for their life outside in society. And, you know, for, you know, like, our jail here did not have a library, okay? So, it's volunteer group in the community, I being one of them, like about 12 years ago, we just took this upon ourselves to create a library in the two jails here, and we go there every single week, and we become librarians, and we let the inmates to come and check out books. This is what I mean. I mean, not, that is not okay for us to get involved, but this is not, this is not, this shouldn't be the job of individuals in the community, whether, maybe some would decide they want to do this, and then some, at some other point, there is nobody who want to do this. So, it should be more institutionalized, and the justice system has to take care of this. That's what I mean. I don't mean, you know, to send them to, you know, grad school or anything, but I mean that things should be there, and it should not be dependent on the goodwill of members of the community.
Thank you.
That's basically what I want to see in your recommendations.
Can I get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I have to spell it for you. Nilou Far, N-I-L-O-O-F-A-R, last name Sham Bayati, S-H-A-M-B-A-Y-A-T-I. And I should have given my address as well. 2609 Cherry Hills Drive in Champaign. And by the way, I don't see many police cars in my neighborhood.
Cherry Hills. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
Number 10, please.
My name is Lynn Branham. I am a law professor who focuses my work on correctional and sentencing law and policy. I'm also a member of the Community Justice Task Force. I spent years on projects such as an American Bar Association project to develop a model Community Corrections Act, chaired a task force to develop cost-effective pretrial detention, sentencing, and correction systems and other projects, again, I've been very privileged to work on. And it's really, I'm thankful that we have this opportunity to come before you today. Cal, welcome. I saw you brought rain. We don't need it, but we're glad, we're glad you're here.
I thought that noise up there was a little mixed.
Yeah, yeah. But I confess, I haven't had a chance to read the full report, so my feedback will be limited. I hope it will be helpful, though, and welcome. I did see that, and was pleased to see, that ILPP has recognized some of the deficits in the current system that the task force clearly recognizes, lack of pretrial services program, a lack of continuum of sanctions, lack of data collection and evaluation, poor conditions in the downtown jail, and lack of a planning group. But again, this was a quick read, but I saw two flaws, and I have to say, I'll be blunt, they were stunning flaws in the draft, but I'm really grateful that I'm hearing an open-mindedness here, that you recognize it is a draft, and that you're open to suggestions. Now, the first problem that I want to bring to your attention has already been mentioned by James Kilgore, but I think it bears repeating, because it is so important. Process is important, and unless we have a good process, we cannot have good substance. And so, I want to address the issue of the Criminal Justice Advisory Board. It's clear that we need a planning board, but in the draft report, there's first of all, a reference to the big three, the presiding judge, the state's attorney, and the sheriff, and then add a few others who hold the keys to the jail. But research has shown that key stakeholders have to be part of the decision-making process in order for criminal justice reforms to be implemented and implemented effectively. And this draft shows a very narrow view of who the stakeholders are. For example, we have a state's attorney, but we know, have no defense attorney. And holistic defense is something that can and should be implemented in this county. We probably won't put it in the task force reports, because we can't put everything, but that is a conspicuous omission. Law enforcement would be on that planning board, but there's no mention of people who work with those populations that are, it's mentioned, part of that, the categorical overcrowding in the jail and criminal justice system. In other words, for example, the mentally ill. And as you recognize, there's no public representatives, and to not include the public would be the antithesis of restorative justice. I guess, in short, what I'm saying is, we are all stakeholders, and we have got to have a broader understanding of what, of what this notion of stakeholder means. Now, by contrast, the proposal that the task force is considering for what we would call a restorative and criminal justice coordinating council includes, for example, an expert on substance abuse problems, would include an expert on mental illness, would include several representatives from the public, and a local public defender. The recommendation, as it stands right now, was particularly mystifying to me, I have to admit, because the model that the task force is considering, and again, we aren't tendering this to the board, so again, these are my views that I'm expressing.
Are or are not?
I am not, because the task force report is due towards the end of June. But I did just a seven-minute search today, and in seven minutes, I found, for example, that in Michigan, Dennis Strance is probably one of the foremost experts on community corrections boards, he probably is in this country. They've got criminal defense attorney, business community, service providers representative of the general public. In Denver, citizen probation representative, citizen rep, victim advocate, citizen rep, citizen rep, of 21 members, six people come from the community. My second grave concern relates to the timing for the appointment of the planning board. I noted that the draft report mentions the planning board should be appointed before the final report is issued. That's a grave concern to me. It creates the appearance, I'm not saying that this has happened, but it creates the appearance that decisions have already been made behind closed doors. And that will engender distrust. And I think that this whole decision-making process, for it to work, we've got to work on building, building trust. And also, to appoint this body before the report is issued would lead to poor decision-making. We need a set, lots of sets, of fresh eyes and ears, and they can't be on the outside looking in. The Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority reported that in 2012, there were 260 people in the state prisons who wouldn't have to be there if we had, if we had community-based options. Now, the people in prison have committed more serious crimes than those in jail. So, if that's true for the prisons, what about our jail? Now, we do know from your report that the vast, vast majority of people who are in the jail haven't been convicted of anything. We know that close to half of them are either being detained for or sentenced for a misdemeanor. The majority are in there for nonviolent crimes. So, I guess what I would ask, as going back to the composition of the board, is that, to leave to the, leave to the task force, the recommendation regarding who should be on the planning board, at least extend that respect for the community, because we are here. I do think your own recommendation can be more general and say that there should be service providers, there should be these experts, but I don't think it's appropriate to say the big three should be on and these other individuals. I don't think that it would be helpful to Champaign County, or the right thing to do to close the dialogue before the task force has even issued its report. Now, why is it so important? In 1980, a jail was constructed in this county. It is a dungeon. That reality should give this community pause. A jail built in 1980 should be in good shape. In 1996, an annex was constructed. A few years later, more construction. The space, we are told, is inadequate. It does not have, for example, basic programming space. The fact that the space, we are told, is inadequate should give the people of Champaign County pause. It is now time that we learn our lesson. The people of Champaign County, I believe we should say, never again. I think it's important for us to be efficient, but we should not be rash. So, my final request would be that you recommend that no decisions be made until both the final report is issued, the task force report is issued, and then there's been a discussion of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick things. You've got a couple flaws in your points, too, here. One is, this is not a planning board. CJAB is not at all a planning board. It has no, no formal planning role. It is a managing board, and it's a totally different thing. The second thing, it is not a community corrections board. It has no community corrections board responsibilities, per se. It has management responsibilities of the core case flow of the criminal justice system. That said, I think there's a good role for a planning board and a community corrections board, and I take your points.
Okay. Thank you. We can talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 11, please.
How y'all doing? County board, how you doing, Mr. Kavanaugh?
Name and address, please.
Name, Martell Miller. Address, General Delivery. Whew, I don't know where to start, but I'm gonna start with this. I want y'all to take time out to listen to Martin Luther King's speech, February 4th, 1968. I think it'll wake up some of us, if y'all go listen to that speech. This is for the county board. I wonder how can three people get control of the public safety tax to build a new jail? safety tax to build a new jail? Deb Bucy, Julia Reese, and our sheriff. That was voted by the people to take care of the courthouse and build a juvenile center. And it should have been sunset to be put back to the people. Somehow, the county board decided they're gonna keep it forever, and decide what they're gonna do with it. But at least, the county board should be able to decide what they're gonna do with the money instead of three people. And to build a jail, I just seem to understand that. We only got 100% of early trial learning. Early trial learning could prevent people from going to jail. That's educational. And Mr. Kavanoff, I'm gonna go to you. You came here within a week, you had told some people you're here to build a jail. When you came here within the week of being here, you said you was here to build a jail. That's what you told the admins when you got here, first week you were here. I wanna know when your contract's up, 'cause if your contract's up, that means you got to be done, unless they're gonna pay you to come back. And you say you're going on vacation sometime in June, so it must be sometime in June. You don't wanna deal with racial disparities. And it's really hard to deal with racial disparities, especially in 2013, when we're looking at, we had Obama's for a president, and everything's supposed to be well. But in Champaign, some of the county board should look at, between 18-year-old and 35-year-old, it's 42 to 46 unemployment. If y'all gonna hire a consultant to come and look at a jail, let's do a climate study. The county board oughta get on board with it, city councils, most city councils oughta get on board, of what goes on with minorities in this town. We don't deal with the racial profiling. We don't deal with the shootings that didn't happen in our community over the past 40 years of five individuals that got shot by the police, and no one's been charged about it. As long as, a couple of them been accidentally. We don't deal with the suicides in the jail. When we had a mental health department in the jail that was local, we didn't have no hangings. We got an outside source in here, we didn't have hangings in our jail. Suicides. And these are things that y'all been elected officials to look over, of the places to just take care. Y'all take care of the sheriff department. Y'all oversee us. And it's county board business, but we looking at a jail. We got 20 million that we should be investigating our community, instead of building a jail for our community. And our jail is, we got one 30-years-old, and one less than 20-years-old. $20 million can do a lot for this community, but a jail ain't one of them. And they bought a consultant to build a jail to deal with the problem. And the county board, y'all elected to deal with problems. Y'all not elected to build a jail. Y'all need to give these people their money back, and let us vote and see what we want in this county. And I had two people, when they asked how many people read the report, two people put their hands up. Y'all ain't concerned about a jail. Y'all ain't even reading the report. If y'all vote to get this man, pay him to leave, and to think about what y'all wanna do for the people. Now, I hope that all the people are listening. 20 million for the jail, all the things that we could do in this county. We ride up and down our streets, ride up down some of our county roads. I ride everywhere. We need new roads. Our schools need some help. And that's all y'all here to bring this man in to talk about a jail. I'm not gonna talk about a jail. I'm talking about other things we need.
Sir, this is public opinion on--
I know it's public opinion.
If you want to discuss--
All right.
--the jail and your concerns--
All right, I'm gonna discuss the jail.
Please do.
The jail should not be built. The money y'all paid this man, I'll pay him and make him leave. And I wanna know, when is his contract up? Mr. Kavanoff, when is your contract up?
May, in the May.
In the May. So if his contract up, and in the May. Now, when the county board votes for this jail?
There is no schedule on when we vote on this. We haven't even seen the final draft yet.
Final draft.
The final draft. Excuse me. I hate to interrupt the chair. And with sincere respect, there is no proposal for a new jail.
There is no, so why are you here?
There are lots and lots of options for programs, services, and facilities in this report.
All right.
And a lot of them--
All right, I'm gonna let me finish.
A lot of them, I have to take default. Sound like they're a proposal because they're recommendations, but it's a draft report. There is no final report. There is no action plan. There is no schedule. There is none of that yet.
Is a mental facility being built in Champaign County to hold mental patients?
Is there one being built there now?
No, no. Are you asking for that? There's a recommendation for a mental facility to be built.
There is a recommendation amongst many options to consider building beds that are more specialized to handle the mentally ill people that are already in jail.
Not for a built-in jail. A mental facility--
Separate from the jail.
For adult patients--
Right, right.
For adult patients. That's what I'm asking. That should be recommended for this county. A mental facility for adult patients, when they go to the hospital, don't transfer them to a county jail. Transfer them to a hospital. If they mentally ill, they don't go to jail. They go get help.
Okay. I take that point as a very valuable suggestion.
Thank you. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Number 12, please. Number 12.
Steve Moser, 1860 County Road 1400 North Urbana. I sat on this board for 20 years. I chaired this board for two years, and this is the first time I've been on this side of the table in the last 20 years.
No, I saw you on this side of the table during that mental health discussion when you gave the long history of the jails, so I've heard you talk about it from that role already.
I was a little concerned when I saw that one of the immediate options available to the county was to close that downtown facility. I can go back to 1992, when that jail was full, and I haven't got the numbers, but we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars between 1992 and 1996, when that second satellite jail was put up and opened, busing prisoners to Coles County, to Ford County, to the Witt County, and watching the sheriff play musical chairs with deputies on the road here, there, and everywhere, trying to get somebody to court and take them back. And we've looked at that old jail down there as a disaster ever since it was built. And it was built in haste because the state came in here and closed it, or ordered it closed, and the county board had no money. They had no bonding authority to build it. That was granted to the voters, granted that in 1995 or 1994, when we got funding for property tax on this, and then in 88, 98, a quarter cent was passed. And that's been the lifeline of this whole criminal justice system since, as far as paying expenses on these buildings, and keeping the lights on, and paying the sheriff's deputies' salaries. And to me, if you go back and close one of these without implementing all these recommendations that I've heard, you're gonna be right back to hauling them somewhere else and bringing them back, and it's gonna throw the criminal justice system right into tailspin. I served under three chief judges here in this county in the 20 years I was here. DeFonis is probably the most amenable to considering other methods other than incarceration. Townsend was not amenable to anything that would put anybody out on the street that he thought was a problem, and the third one was, Deb, I've lost my mind, Harold Jansen. And he fought this battle all the way through, and we've had three state's attorneys--
You know, if you've lost your mind, I'm in deep trouble, because I think I'm older than you are, but--
No, you're not.
I want, yes, I am. I want some stuff from you for this report, 'cause I know the history. Tell me what you want changed in this report--
Well, I don't know what I want changed. I don't want that jail downtown closed until you come up with an option. I think it's a very bad idea--
Is that what you're saying? You want it as a safety housing in case the other things don't work?
I wanna see a plan where you can make this satellite jail work.
Okay.
But right now, it isn't gonna work. And I've also grown tired of the complaints about the job Julia Reese does, and that Dan Walsh does, because I served under another sheriff that wasn't halfway interested in anything that Dan Walsh has tried to do in his 10 years there. And I have no criticism of this justice system, as I've looked at it from behind that table and since I've left, but I think we're punishing some elected officials that have done what I think's an excellent job, in Julia Reese, and Dan Walsh, and Judge DeFonis.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Number 13, please.
My name is Bobby Trist. I live at 503 North Fair in Champaign. And members of the board, the community, and Dr. Kalamanoff, Cal, I thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. This spring marks 50 years, 35 of them in Champaign County, that I have been involved with mental health. When I was a college sophomore, I participated in a service weekend with the American Friends Service Committee at Ypsilanti State Hospital. Since then, I have become a licensed clinical social worker. I've worked with inpatient and outpatient, with adolescents and elderly, with chronic and acute, in Michigan, Germany, and Illinois. In addition, I have experience with mentally ill family members, both in my family of origin and the family that I raised. When I started in 1963, psychotropic drugs were just beginning to enable the deinstitutionalization of the huge state hospitals, which had warehoused thousands of people, often for their whole adult lives. It was a very exciting time. The hope was that these human beings would find better treatment closer to home, and the opportunity to live more normal lives in the community. And indeed, the mass of state institutions are gone, replaced in part by regional mental health centers. The promise of adequate mental health services in local communities, however, has fallen short. Many people who need treatment end up in jail because there is a lack of other places for them to be when they act out. Often, mentally ill people are homeless. Sometimes they may, especially due to finances, lack access to necessary prescription medications, which would keep them stable, and in other cases, they may refuse to take them. Coordination between the jail and outpatient facilities can be a major problem. It's my understanding that medications that prisoners have been taking may not be available when they're in jail, so they have to switch, only to change back when they are released. This can be a disaster. I understand that the jail can only give prisoners three days of medications when they're released. The person then has to initiate contact with a mental health center or physician to obtain medication beyond those three days. For someone who is mentally ill, who may not have a home or even a phone, this can be an insurmountable obstacle. Without their medication, the behavioral cycle can begin all over again. After attending a recent Champaign County Mental Health Board meeting, I was very impressed by the number of services that agencies reported that they offered in the community. It was a different story, however, when the police representative spoke. They reported often having no options when individuals acted out beyond taking them to jail, to the emergency room, or to let them go. It would, so again, coordination seems to be a pressing need, and it would surely be helped by having the mental health services in the jail brought back to be provided by local practitioners. We need more resources, and better resources. Beds without bars, as Cal likes to say. These are not only cheaper than beds with bars--
Have it there.
--jail cells, but more effective. Another barrier to access is apparently that many people are banned from emergency rooms, local homeless shelters, and the mental health center, presumably because of previous dangerous or otherwise unacceptable behavior. If this is in fact the case, we need one or more facilities where those needing treatment and shelter can come or be brought. So for the mentally ill involved with the criminal justice system, we need three things. A system of coordination between mental health providers and the police, a system to enable community, sorry, continuity of specific medication already prescribed between the jail and outpatient providers, as well as a source of funding for medication for those without means, and three, a facility of beds without bars to provide housing and services for those who now end up in jail. These are long-term goals. I think the group gathered here tonight has the opportunity to be midwives, midwives deliver, who needed service for mentally ill in our community. The Chinese symbol for crisis includes the symbols for danger and opportunity. I hope we can empower the opportunity and decrease the danger. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, I do have a quick question. Beds without bars takes care of a certain percentage of the mentally ill. There are some mentally ill who need some bars. Do you acknowledge that?
Yes.
So that's a, do you understand that, can you opine or write me about the boundary here? Because there's the issue of the jail. Everybody will acknowledge that you need a cage for some dangerous people, however few. And everybody will acknowledge that you need mental health treatment for some mentally ill without bars, however many or however few. But it's the issue of the in-betweens that is of some concern, although I do believe that the report addresses the three points you made.
I don't think they're all in the--
Mental health section.
Well, no. I don't think they're all in the recommendations or what.
It's true. It's true. The report is choppy and disorganized in many ways, but they're in the report someplace. But thank you for your input. I wouldn't mind your feedback later on in an email or something about this issue of bars for the mentally ill in the jail or in a mental health facility with bars. See, I mean--
Well, I think a lot of the people that end up in jail don't need to be there if we had adequate resources. That, of course, I mean, it's just like you said, the infirmary. Some people need to be in the hospital, but we need to have, you know, you said the other night, we need an infirmary, and I think that's absolutely true, because we absolutely don't take care of people's medical needs or their mental health needs when they do need to be locked up.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Number 14, please. Do we have number 14? I see three people standing. They can't help me, number 14. Okay, there she comes.
Hi, Sophia.
Hi, Dr. Cal. How are you doing this evening? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the county board. Dr. Cal, my name is Sophia Lewis. I'm leading the women in the jail ward-- My name is Sophia Lewis. I'm leading the Women in the Jail Work Group of CUCPJ, Champaign-Urbana Center for Peace and Justice. And I am glad that Mark Insland came up and spoke before me. And I would like to thank Dr. Cal. He graciously met with us, with our work group on yesterday, as well as did Ms. Nancy Griffin, who is the Jail Programs Coordinator. And one of the things that we have a concern with, it was the top-listed item in the transcript that I've prepared for talking points with Dr. Kalmanoff, was the impact that incarceration has on women who have cases with the Department of Children and Family Services while they are incarcerated. And one of the biggest problems is that we were able to make a recommendation about it that Dr. Cal has agreed to just make directly from that as a recommendation for women to be able to take classes that count toward their social services plan that they are recommended to take, that they are required to take in order to get favorable consideration for receiving their children, the custody of their children back. Right now, presently, the parenting class that is taught did not, does not count toward that requirement plan because it was introduced by, by, well, Ms. Griffin, the program coordinator, hired a consultant, starting two years ago, to come in and teach the plan on her own. And the Department of Children and Family Services, she had written them for years, asking them to please teach the class inside of the jail. And they have consistently made it clear that they have no intention of doing any outreach. And if a young woman has nine months to complete her services plan, the six months that she spends incarcerated does not count, well, it, you know, it's lost. Yes, it's lost against the nine months, and therefore she only has three months remaining to complete the requirements. And the problem that is happening here is that mothers are losing their children for any indiscriminate amount of time or period of time that the Department of Children and Family Services suits their purposes. And it is a very sad situation. And my friend Jamie, whom Dr. Cal met yesterday, she didn't lose her children to the system. The system proactively shook her down out of her children, six of them, for 11 years now. And she's extremely heartbroken. And you have a lot of women walking around here who are just sheer agony and sheer pain. And it's an alarming trend that's going on around this country that we all should be very, very concerned about. And this is how the social services sector of the 99% eats and pays their bills. When they're able to do these kinds of things, anywhere from two to three to five to six to eight years lost. And it is an epidemic problem here. And Dr. Kalmanoff, I would like to say that I'm glad that you, number one, acknowledged that families remaining intact is important post-incarceration, and that the mother and child or mother and parent bond is extremely important. And that you recognize that children who are removed from the home often wind up in jail themselves. I've spoken with young women who said that they, who are angry over the displacement issue of their life, and it was never explained to them, and so they wound up in criminal activity. They've directly explained that to me themselves as the cause. And so what we proposed, the Women in the Jail Work Group, was that instead of a female incarcerated having to fill out a request form and send it through the sergeant, supposedly to go to the judge in order to beg and plead for, you know, whether or not that she can take a course that's related to her social services plan recommendation package, that there simply be an automatic registration of people who are sent, are booked or arrested and given a social services plan, and they're automatically on that list. And that the jail take advantage of its habeas corpus, or literally, you have the body to indicate that they will have that inmate in place where they need them to be in order to fulfill their Uh, well, I mean, that's another option as well. Well, for either, for the Department of Children and Family Services to get together and figure out how to approve the course that's already being taught by the consultant because it's already being paid for by someone somewhere, or to, for them to just go ahead and decide to teach the course and teach it in units so that when a person, if a person gets out before they finish taking the course, they can pick back up in nice, neat little units, pick up with lesson number five out of eight or something like that.
Understood, okay.
Mm-hmm. And let's see. The other suggestion was that women have peers to counsel them. I'm glad, Dr. Kalmanoff, that you acknowledged that women improve themselves better in jail when they have closeness to others and community. We have one individual who expressed that, you know, she feels that she was incarcerated in Champaign County jails, but she has been incarcerated before, both in jail and in prison. And she said that it would be encouraging just to have someone to, from the jail staff, just to say hi, you know, and how have you been? You don't have to get all into the person's business. But, you know, she said that that would be an amazing uplift in spirit to a person. And she also recommended that if peers of the women, in the sense that they've been incarcerated before, like an entourage of former incarceries could be allowed into the jails to talk to the women, even if they're waiting to go to prison from jail, and encourage them about improving their lives and taking advantage of what the jail's offerings are, as far as if they need, you know, drug rehabilitation and so on and so forth. We found out yesterday that only about 10% participation there is in these courses that, you know, are required. And let's see. So if they could have, not to replace the counselors who are already there in the prison, but, or in the jail, I'm sorry. But it's like a friend of mine, my friend, was explaining to me. She said, well, Sophia, you know, you and I could go into the jail together. And she said, you may know, you know, all the right things to say, and you, you know, know how to make intelligent conversation and so forth like that. And she said, but I would get to them a lot faster than you would because I have been to there. I've been where they are. And so that's why I think that that is very important. And for, and she also recommended that, from waking to sleep to bedtime, that the women have something to do, a structured program of activities that they're constantly involved with because, she said, there would be nothing to do except for them to focus on getting back out and doing, you know, the same things over. And I can tell you that nothing, I think, would go further to improve the mental health of women who are incarcerated and have child custody cases than to know that they could be making progress while they're there in jail toward getting back their children. And also, when, Dr. Kalmanoff, you mentioned about the points system for determining whether or not someone should be incarcerated. We have a big cultural difference here in what's considered to be abuse versus spanking. And the community has not had that forum, has not had that conversation yet. And presently, it is a, the rules about it are kind of hidden in the annals of the Department of Children and Family Services code book, and then there's like a jump out gotcha when, you know, someone calls to say that someone spanks, you know, their children. There's there is no way that a young woman should have been incarcerated because when they arrived, she said, yes, I did spank my child, because they had healed marks from a spanking that was from a year ago, but they didn't see any fresh marks from any time since that time. And so it seems as though maybe this happened after hours. And the Department of Children and Family Services, from my understanding, is the only agency that has the authority to take a warrant to a home and remove children. And if this was done after hours and say, this person actually called the police, and they came, and it seems like they make a decision based off, you know, what they think that DCFS might want them to do. But I think they do that not quite knowing the abyss that they catapult that mother into. And she's taken from that point and has to fight for her motherhood life to keep her children. Next thing you know, she's jailed for six months, which counts against her nine-month plan. And the system will take her, get her in court, and combat her like they are a gladiator fighting a monster to take her children from her, and instead of continuing to improve and to help her. So this is, so perhaps at that point, instead of a, bringing on a full-fledged case off of that, my understanding is that, because I talked to one of the police chiefs, is that the police officer is supposed to come there, and if there is an emergency situation, then arrest somebody. And I don't understand how a year-old spanking, while it may have needed attention, was a cause to arrest. But then perhaps a citation to appear in court and receive some improvement against what they were doing would have been more appropriate. So then my question to you is, well, I wanted to speak a little bit, I'm predominantly focused on women in the jail. But the Community Justice Task Force, I just wanted to comment on that for a moment. I think that if we do have a closed task force of only the gatekeepers and no community members, I think that these stories that are on the ground would have a hard time getting to the people who are the decision-makers. And I feel like, you know, there's plenty of watercooler time for people who, you know, communicate pretty well as gatekeepers to, you know, have their own meetings. I mean, we're not going to be at their workspace, you know. So that's on that. And then as far as the risk assessment, as far as the risk assessment tool, one thing I noticed is that, hmm, two of the factors that determine the points would be whether or not you have, you own your home or you rent, and who has priors. Well, who are the homeowners and who has the priors? So I think that that's kind of a built-in bias. And maybe that bias could be balanced by observing, I know you're not going to rework this metric before you finish this report and work it to death, but maybe that could be balanced, for example, by determining what factors cause a person to flee even if they have a, even if they do own a home, and maybe
Did you notice that discussion of the Hennepin County project where they revised the risk assessment instrument to try to cull out the correlates to race disparity that turned out not to be predictive of appearance?
Oh, no, no, I didn't, I didn't read that. I'm going to go back and read everything more carefully. And
Could you summarize, please?
Oh, yes, I will. Yes, I certainly will. So, and let's see. The other thing, I think if you want to, I had wanted at one point to, and the group, you know, had mixed feelings about it, so I didn't do it. I was wondering if you were familiar with Michelle Alexander, who wrote The New Jim Crow. It's like our CUCPJ practically endorses her. And the view of why, you know, a lot of things that are disparities actually are racism. I just wanted to say that. And I wanted to know if DCFS is going to be housed within the Department of Children and Family Services. I didn't know until yesterday that they were going to have a place, you know, in one of the potential facilities.
I don't know that either. I just, I brought that up as a, whether you had an opinion about that.
Oh, okay, and I do. I'll talk more with you about it. And then I would also like to say, early Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there in general, but also to the ones who, but particularly to the ones who are separated from their children, for whatever reasons. I would like for them to stay encouraged, no matter how it looks. And that's the end of my
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Number 15, please. Number 15.
While 15 is coming up, I'd just like to say something about Sophia, who's been on my case from day one. And there's something about Sophia that I guess many of you know, is tenacious and dignified and polite. And I don't always agree with everything you say, but I get a lot out of listening to you. But I particularly appreciate the tenacity, dignity, and politeness.
Hi, Stuart Levy, 1108 Foley Avenue in Champaign.
Are you the technical guy that got me into that last year?
The same one.
I reckon.
Yeah. So I guess three points. One is, so estimating the available funding is important in planning what we have the capacity to do. And obviously, the county has its own ways of doing that, but your report also makes some mention of it, and I wanted to point something out about it. The Public Safety Sales Tax estimate says, I think, it sounds awfully rosy to me, expecting 2.5% annual growth. Maybe that's true. And saying that it's currently not fully committed. One thing that I had heard about it is that on the capital projects that the Public Safety Sales Tax was voted in to cover, on at least one large one of those, there's more outstanding debt on that project now than there was when the project was initiated. In other words, it's not really going to pay down that debt. I don't know detail about that. It seems like an important thing if you're trying to estimate how much money is available. If I could mention, I do know that there's professional accounting expertise on the county board. If I could point at Rachel Schwartz. I don't know whether you've spoken with her already, but I hope that you do.
No, we had about a quarter of a cup of coffee and discussed inside jokes, but yes.
Okay. Anyway, but that seems important if
I have a request outstanding on that one.
So, that's one. Another, another is, well, I mean, you've been hearing tonight a number of substantive criticisms of this draft, and I'm really glad to see that you're taking seriously the prospect of addressing them. That's very good. I mean, you could easily just be defensive. So, anyway, good for you.
I am not defensive.
Yeah, well. I understand that coming back here, you know, to the middle of Illinois from the West Coast for another public meeting would be burdensome. Well, okay.
I'm going to do it.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, I'm going to do it. I just, the question is what the trade-off is going to be and how I'm going to deal with the issue of presenting a final report in absentia.
Yeah.
I have to work that out.
Well, okay, this is why, this is why it's important that you recognized me at the outset. A few weeks ago, we had a meeting at the public library where you spoke with something like 100-odd people, and there were many conversations. And you did it all remotely. You did it from your house, as far as I could tell. So it would have saved, okay, anyway, okay, from your office. But anyhow, it would save a lot of time to do it that way.
Money.
Anyhow, money too. They're both important, yours and ours, but it would mostly be your
Well, let me interrupt you, Stuart, just for a second, and y'all can talk about this amongst yourselves and get Deb Bucy and the chair and other people and voice your interest in this. But I don't have a limit on that kind of time.
That's good.
So if you guys want to have a discussion about topic X only, women in jail, race disparity, reentry, I don't care what it is, and you have a critical mass of people, so it isn't just me talking to one person. I've got that computer. That's how I visit with my 19-year-old in college now. It works like spit. I mean, it doesn't take any effort on my part at all, except the time of the call.
Okay.
And so it's not got a limit on it. I mean, I
Sure. But let me, let me tell you why I'm, let me tell you why I'm bringing this up. I mean, a number of people are raising quite substantial changes. What I'm hoping you will offer to do is to present a second draft in advance to the final one, which would be discussed at such a meeting.
No, no, I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why. And you may not see your own, you meaning self-interest in this. But your board did a very interesting thing, a brave thing. They hired nonprofit with a checkered past in terms of getting into conflict with They hired a nonprofit with a checkered past in terms of getting into conflict with elected authorities. You know that?
Um, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I, I hope it's true.
I've, I've done a bunch of jobs, and I, I've done a bunch of jobs, and it hasn't been every job that I've left with kisses and love, or an invitation to return.
Hmm.
And, and I, I have been hired, and the contract language is pretty clear, and the proposal language is pretty clear, and our website is pretty clear, that our job is to be independent, outside, objective, and free of any independent, or, uh, uh, of any dependency on a conflict of interest of any kind, whether ideology, or money, or business interests, or whatever. So, my job is to not be able to, not, not to have to salute when this gentleman says, "I want a building."
Mm-hmm.
Or this guy in the back says, "I want a high-rise," or "I want a low-rise," or "I don't want any jail." And it's not my job to salute when you say, "I don't want a single bit, a single bit." I, in fact, knock them all down, and we'll have no jail. It's not my job to salute, it's my job to listen, and look at the data, and research, and be the quote expert, which is a arrogant statement to make, but I've been hired to be that.
Mm-hmm.
Our firm has been hired to be that. And there's a bunch of people behind me who are practitioners, sheriffs, deputy district attorney, da-da-da-da-da, people who've been in the field for a long time working with me, and staff. But in the end, au fond, at the bottom of the game, I've got to call it the way I see it. I'm not accountable to anybody to obey their wishes. I'm accountable to listen, I'm accountable to do the research, to get the numbers, to be right about the facts, to be methodologically correct about the research, but at some point I have to sort of say, "This is what we think is the best thing you can do here." And then you all can have at each other, because I'm going off, because I have, unfortunately, not got a Full Employment Act in Champaign, so I have to keep on trucking.
Hmm.
But, so, you don't get a second-
That's why I'm not asking you to spend a couple of extra days in transit in order to have an additional meeting.
No, no, I appreciate, and I appreciate that sincerely, Stuart. I, I'm just trying to say that, I, I want to keep on listening to anybody that got, got the wind to keep on talking.
Hmm.
And I, and I'm not doing that just idly, or to flatter. If, I've heard a lot of interesting things tonight, I've got notes. But I don't want to wait until I get the approval of the Community Justice Task Force, or of this group of board members right here with the facility chairman and the, uh, the old Farmer John, and anybody else behind me here who says, "This is what we want." I say, "Okay, you got it, boss man." And I don't want to be asking Alan Jones and, and Dan Walsh if it's okay if I publish this, or, 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 that's not the report you bought with your money.
Hmm.
You bought an independent, outside, objective hit. And that last procedure that you suggested about one more draft-
Mm-hmm.
-as if, until I get folks lined up to say, "It's okay, boss," then I publish the final, ain't going to go. But, that's not to say I'm not open to hearing a whole lot more, and I'll keep listening. And I have made changes the last three days, major changes, work to do when I get home. And I'll continue to do that, and we had this issue, a deadline, an extension, and figuring out how to accommodate all these sometimes competing or opposed interests. So with all due respect, up till where you said, "Second draft," you saw me being pretty calm and looking for a way to work, and you want to work with it.
Mm-hmm.
But I ain't going for a second draft.
All right. I mean, I'm saying this because I think a lot of, a lot has been raised here.
Yeah.
We, we would like to know that we've been heard, you know, not, not just in the notes on your pad.
Okay.
I, I have one final point.
Proof is in the pudding, though, right? If you don't think I've been heard, you write me a nasty letter when it's over, but there will be an over at this point.
Hmm, yeah, okay. The third point is, is this, um, okay, political, a question of political science. You, you talked about, uh, elected officials being the primary people effectively looking at the, uh, looking at the justice of the criminal justice system.
No, management.
Well, at the, at, well, yes, they're appointed to manage it, but in, in managing it, they decide what the goals are.
Yeah.
Right? That's what, that's what managers do. They, that's the executive function.
Yes.
But, all right. We, you've, you've heard many times, uh, the, the burden of criminal punishment falls very unequally on the people of this county. Um, there's racial disparity, there's class disparity, you know, you go to the court on a random day and you'll see homeless people who were urinating in public or dropping trash in other people's trash barrels. I don't have to worry about that, but there are people who do. And so if you look at the, if you look at the set of people who are voting, a lot of people are going to see the criminal justice system is working just fine, you know, they don't get in trouble. Uh, you yourself had said at a meeting some months back, uh, something, it's a paraphrase of a caricature, but something like, you know, people with jobs don't send people with jobs to jail, they, they sue them. Um, and, yeah, it's a caricature, but there's a lot of truth in it. Um, I don't really, I don't, for the most part, have to worry about, about being sent to jail. So the, the effect is that if you look at, um, if you look to elected officials and the people who are electing them to judge whether the criminal justice system is doing its job, um, most of them are going to say that it's fine, even if for a very important but relatively small set of people, it's very far from fine. And that's why management of the, of the operations of criminal justice needs to not just be in the hands of the people who are, whose, uh, electors tell them that everything is fine. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Quick, quick response, Stuart, on your way back to your seat, too, so the next person can go.
Sixteen.
I take your point, and I've heard a lot of it tonight, that in, in addition, in addition to or on the side of or off to a way to have an impact with, a management function of the people who are elected and responsible, needs to be a vehicle for expressing public input into the system that includes the transparency of what is going on. I have heard it, and, 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 and I think I'm being paid to figure that out.
My name is Daryl Cruz, and I live at 2007 South George Huff in Urbana, and I really appreciate the opportunity, and I'm sure the community does, to be able to have this discussion of the study. But I'm curious, and I'm troubled by one aspect, and you're providing the community the opportunity to look at the data that you have gathered, the recommendations that you're proposing to each of the seventeen sections or whatever that were in your report. But what's equally interesting to me, or important to me, maybe even more so than the data you collected in the recommendations, is the action plan that you're going to be submitting. And my question is simply this, uh, I'm sure you have in mind a specific sequence of what you're proposing in that action plan in terms of what might be prioritized, timeframes, timelines, different things that you would recommend be done in a certain sequence for certain reasons and that sort of thing. But the problem is, as I see it, you have not included it in any draft, and I'm sure you have a draft in your mind. And part of what I believe is that the action plan, after it's finally all submitted and given, is going to become the major component of discussion. I think the study and the data and the recommendations will be ancillary to the action plan in terms of the county board, and the public will not have had an opportunity to reflect or respond in a draft form the action pla, an action plan.
Nor will the board.
And so my question is, is why is that? Or why, why can't, uh, the action plan, uh, just be given to the county board or the public in the next, uh, ten days or fifteen days for the purpose of some reflection and input in regards to that? Because I think that's critically important in terms, so why is that not allowed or happening?
Uh, you, you know, uh, my, my, my nine-year-old says, "Daddy, sometimes I don't want to go home. I'm having such a good time, but I have to go home." And it's kind of like that. At some point in a process like this, which has a price tag and a, a, a contract and a study process and a data collection phase and an inventory phase and da-da-da-da-da, and it has to be wound down and ended. Now, I understand, and I think it's important as an answer to your query, that the action plan is important.
Mm-hmm.
That's why it's held back, so that I can get all the possible input and problems with the scenarios and the options and the recommendations that I've drafted out here with my team that seem to address a series of problems, gaps, needs, whatever you want to call it. But, um, when the action plan comes in, it gets handed, it's certainly not going to be not available to you, it's going to be a public document. And you have an arena, we're sitting in a room with the arena. It's just, I, at that point, I will probably be gone, because nobody's paying my freight. And I'm not trying to angle for you to hire me to come back and parlay the action plan through your political or community participation process, or your board deliberations or all the rest of it, nor would I ever refuse a decent contract. But the point is, I'm not looking for that. I'm looking for some time off, in fact. But the point is, the action plan is, is, is not a trigger. It doesn't all fall down like a pile of bricks and it's over. Action plan is a document, and it has gotten, going to have act, is going to have recommendations that are stratified by priority and schedule, and hopefully some analysis of each one so that people who are intending or hoping to see implementation, including yourself, of the various things you like or don't like in this emerging product, uh, get, get some closure, or get some results, or get some payoff for their money for the con, contract consultant. That doesn't mean you can't fight over it after I leave.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I, I don't understand your logic at all in terms of the ability for the community to respond. You're allowing the community to respond to, uh, the different sections, the data collection, your recommendations, and an action, the action plan-
Can't you see it coming? Can't you see in the, in the report the various elements of what would be an action?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
So all I'm suggesting is, is that, uh, as you put a draft action plan together, okay, what, I still don't understand, what would be inappropriate for the county board or the public to be able to respond to that?
Only the reality of time and money.
Okay. Okay. Well, I wish you would add a draft action plan as part of this.
I do too, in a way, but at the same time, there's a whole lot of work to pull that thing together, and it's kind of, uh, from a planning point of view, if I did that, I'd be getting the criticism that you did this before you got input on all the stuff that led to it. So there, there's some trade-offs here that I just have to live with. You too.
Yeah, I, I see that as a potential problem, because there's no, that, I see that being a substantive part to no public input.
Okay, so my final word to you-
Yeah.
-is, if, if you see that as a problem, solve it. Start thinking about the arena in which you're going to debate with your board and your criminal justice system leaders, the parts of the action plan that upset you or are missing. Because I don't think it's a document that's going to get, uh, pasted to the wall with epoxy and can't be touched.
Thank you. Number sixteen, please. Are we on seventeen? Oh, number seventeen, please.
I'm on twenty-one.
Are you on twenty-one?
Oh, I must have miscounted.
It feels like that. Okay, seventeen.
Yeah, it is seventeen. No, this is eighteen.
This is seventeen. There, oh, see, he's got the seventeen. We're getting a little-
Hello, Peter Campbell, 318 South Prairie Street, Apartment B in Champaign. Uh, I wanted to ask a brief follow-up question to what's already been raised several times in terms of process. Uh, my understanding of your answer to the last time the question of process was raised a couple speakers ago, uh, was that you discussed, uh, your understanding of the need for, uh, some sort of publicity in the process of the Community Justice Advisory Board, uh, and , uh, ability for kind of public input. Uh, to me, uh, I just want to, uh, reiterate, uh, what I believe has already been said, uh, that I don't think that, that latest response that you just gave a few minutes ago is, uh, in fact, responsive. Uh, the point is not for public comment, uh, only, or, uh, you know, kind of transparency in what a Community Justice Advisory Board is discussing, uh, but also, uh, a real role of the public on the board itself.
Right.
Uh, and in your, uh, you're making this distinction between management, uh, and other forms, but in, uh, on page seven of your report and kind of your initial discussion of this board, uh, you use words like policy, uh, implementation, oversight. Uh, and so I think that it's extremely important, uh, given the many things that your report does a very good job of outlining in terms of, uh, what has already and for quite some time been extremely problematic in terms of all of those areas, uh, the people that, uh, whether deliberately, intentionally, I mean, I don't know them, I don't know their intent, uh, have been, uh, responsible for those problems are also the people, uh, that you suggest should be on the board. Uh, and it seems that, uh, you know, especially given the points about the disenfranchisement, uh, including the political disenfranchisement, you were referring to voting, uh, somewhat earlier, which I think is frankly somewhat disingenuous, uh, you know, uh, line in terms of power to take when we're talking about, uh, you know, persons who are imprisoned, uh, who, uh, are disenfranchised through voting, who are transferred into the felony system, et cetera. So I, I would just want to reiterate that I think, uh, the suggestions, uh, would demand, uh, real community power, uh, on such an advisory board, uh, not, uh, only, uh, indirect power through, uh, input, uh, and, uh, you know, kind of public comment and public advisory, uh, as impressive, uh, as the organization of this community, uh, in those areas, uh, already is. Uh, and I would conclude by saying very briefly that, uh, part of the reason I'm so concerned with this is that I think you have, uh, some really, uh, valuable notions for how to, uh, improve what might be called the human rights, uh, or kind of justice of the existing facilities themselves, uh, without need to build a new facility. Uh, and I, uh, welcome that aspect of your report, I find that, uh, very valuable. Uh, I teach a University of Illinois class, uh, in a state prison, local-
In what?
In a local state prison in the Danville Correctional Center. And while I'm, uh, very happy, uh, that, uh, the University of Illinois is able to offer, uh, some access to what is supposed to be public higher education, uh, to some members of the, you know, population of Illinois who, uh, are most disenfranchised from that access, uh, I'm concerned, uh, that, including, you know, with what might happen with something in this report, uh, that it seems that policy improvements with, uh, prisons and jails leave, uh, those kinds of access to those kinds of, uh, you know, kind of improvements, uh, inside jails for persons who are incarcerated, uh, rather than, you know, whi, which even if we're thinking we're focusing on decarceration, doesn't actually result in that. Uh, and so finally, I really think that if the Community Justice Advisory Board, uh, had the kind of power that you suggest here, and is composed, not just is private, right, but is actually composed of the kind of people, uh, that you suggest here, the specific people that you suggest here, uh, then I think that the results of what will actually be implemented, uh, from this plan, uh, may be improvements to the facilities themselves, uh, but will not, uh, address underlying fundamental issues with who is targeted for incarceration and who is not. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, looking across the way, I see number nineteen still sitting in the back corner, so number eighteen should be our last at this point. If anyone else wants to speak, grab a number. Otherwise, number eighteen, please.
My name, my name is Karen Medina, and I live at 1108 Foley in, in Champaign. Excuse me. And I will attack this alphabetically. Um, cages, CJAB, databases, and maintenance. Cages, C, CJAB, database, and maintenance. Okay, cages. Um, we all agree that cages, um, aren't the best way for everybody, and that cages should only be used in really bad situations, and that a lot of people that we put in cages will eventually be put back out into society. So everybody has a stake in, in the criminal justice system, all right? CJAB, please consider a version two of your CJAB. Please consider a C, a CJAB++. Um, in, in the idea that we all have a stake in the criminal justice system, we all have expertise, for, just from the people that have spoken today, we have a lot of expertise and a lot of really strong convictions in this area, you know, even if it was, say, like a, a person who's very interested in women in prisons, um, that type of person on a CJAB would also be very helpful. Because I am very much afraid that, um, without the community being involved in it, for instance, you would not have been hired if, if we hadn't, if the community had not been, um, outspoken and had a voice. Then they, the board would have gone on with this program without ever doing a needs assessment at all, and, um, they might have, if they had done one, it definitely would not have been you unless there had been political, I mean, people involved, community involvement. So there is a great advantage in having community involved. So, there is a great advantage in having community involvement. So, please consider a second version of your CJAB. Databases. The City of Champaign Police were stopping young black males and putting them in a database. There was no reason for them to be, to stop a person, they were just stopping them and putting them into a database. This led, this and a lot of other actions have led to distrust. We don't trust the police, we don't trust the justice system. If there was a way for us to become more trustworthy of it, they, okay, the justice system needs to be trustworthy, and we do not trust them now. If you actually put a citizen on the CJAB, I think you might get a little bit more trust in the system. If we had more political, if we had more, more of a voice, okay? So, then the last thing is maintenance. The buildings that they do have, they have not maintained. What makes us believe that they will maintain the future? The taxes that were supposed to go toward maintenance was not used for maintenance. You can talk to Rachel Schwartz about that, she has a lot of information on that. You really need to talk to Rachel Schwartz on what has happened to the money, the quarter cent tax. And so, what makes, I think I'll just leave it at that. What makes us understand, what, how do we know that they will maintain a future building if that is what is going to happen, or if they're going to maintain it, any of the programs that get started? And I would hope that there are a lot more programs rather than physical structure. But we don't trust the current situation, and I'm going to stop there.
Sure, of course. I appreciate that last comment in many ways, particularly this kind of synthesis of a number of other comments in a very succinct and clear way. And I'm going to risk the chairman's ire and everybody's patience to raise a question myself that's going to call on some more folks in the audience to speak, and make some teeth grind behind me and in the audience and around, and even my own tummy. But I do want to take another five, or maybe ten, because if there's one consistent thing that's kept coming up here tonight, it's this CJAB deal and community participation. And I'm going to have, obviously, I'm going to have to solve that problem because it is, for me, I'm really good at only one thing in this world, and that is dealing with jail overcrowding. It tends to spill over into the whole system of criminal justice, because that's what crowding comes from. And I know how to make it go away, so to speak. So, I want to say, first of all, by way of introduction to the question I'm going to ask, you know, you already have a CJAB. Judge DeFonis, and Julia Reitz, and Dan Walsh, find a way, whether it's by the water cooler or over lunch, or in a meeting room when there's a real issue, to get together and discuss the policy issues that are clogging the flow of cases through the criminal justice system. Now, that is not the word justice, exactly. That is the policy and procedural mechanisms that get clogged in this flow-through system, such that delay results in over-incarceration. And they have gone after it and succeeded greatly in reducing what was a very crowded jail, threatening a really big jail to replace it, to a situation in which you have empty beds right now. Lots of empty beds. How many empty beds now? Alan? Okay, so, I mean, that's, you used to rent beds from other counties. So, I want to make sure that that stays. So, you have a CJAB, and Kalmanoff didn't come to town and lay one on you that is somehow or other some brand-new sinister thing. Kalmanoff is seeking to widen it. Nonetheless, Kalmanoff has his own individual expertise, opinion, and experience, and has been paid to do, to use it. And Kalmanoff says, "It has been proven to me beyond a doubt that a CJAB that has the gatekeepers on it, free to talk candidly with each other," and they first have to learn to do that sometimes, because they usually fight over scarce resources and arrivals, and don't want to share data with each other. In most places, you don't have those problems very much. I'm sorry about that, it's not, it's PTSD, it's not just earthquake stuff. I have a little bit of that that I have to deal with. But listen, these folks are going to have to learn to work together in a slightly broader group in a more formal way, and are not necessarily thrilled at the prospect, because nobody likes change but a wet baby, and they're doing just fine all by the three of them. So, here I come and I say, "Hey, we've got four or five folks to add, and a, and a, and a meeting, another meeting, and, and..." There's resistance all over this place. And yet, we live in a very special country where participation of citizens and democracy and input and review and transparency are magical words. So, it's my job to figure out how to do this. Now, there are two or three ways that sort of attract me. One is to set up a citizens advisory group that's got a line drawn right to CJAB, and there's whatever that means, reporting to, reporting from, feedback from, I don't know, I don't have to think about it. Another way to do it is to do what the last speaker, Karen, mentioned, which is to have a citizen member. And I have already got kind of a citizen member involved, but I don't know what the word citizen is, because I don't think there are too many non-citizens in here, and we wouldn't want to exclude a noncitizen. We're actually talking about a resident, a person from the county who isn't a criminal justice official with a dog in the fight, so to speak. So, my question to the, to the forum, and it's the entire forum, but I think that might be interesting to let the board speak first, and just, just take a fast shot with short comments, is if you were going to...
Very short.
If you were, very, very, if you were going to sort of do this, there's one option, which is a citizens advisory board, and I actually kind of think that's a given. You ought to have a citizens advisory board for the criminal justice system that has a voice, and a way of focusing the comments and interests and complaints and concerns of the community in a constructive and open and transparent fashion. And I'm not afraid to recommend that, and, and, I'm almost done. And the other, but, but you, your comment about, who's the citizen? I mean, not who the name of the person, but what kind of a citizen do you mean? Do you mean a citizen who's from, you know, the task force, or from the media center, or from the university? Or do we go down to Learman Avenue and down the street to the jail, and go in there and pick out an inmate who's the citizen? Or do we take a law professor who teaches out of town, who's the citizen because she has expertise? Or do we, you see what I'm saying? I'm at a loss to figure out how to deal with this issue of citizen accountability, and at the same time, I'm hearing it, and I'm looking for a way, you might want to call it diplomacy, or shilly-shallying by the consultant, but that's my problem. So, I'm just going to, if you don't mind, take, take, take comments from your board through you.
Okay, there's some hands raised. I'll get to them. I'd like to hear from Rachel.
Yeah, I think, since we're assigning flaws here, let me assign one to you, and then we can talk about mine. I think the term you coined here is the source of the problem. First of all, you're not talking really about the community. You called it Community Justice Advisory Board. You're not talking about a Community Justice Advisory. You're talking about the jail justice system.
Criminal Justice Advisory Board.
Criminal justice management.
Right. It's not me who's used the term "community."
Something, committee. So, to call it "community" and then not have this "community" in it is a problem.
Criminal Justice Advisory Board is the name.
Right, but everybody here was talking about community justice and advisory. And we're not talking about advisory, you're not going to set policies, you're talking about how do you flow cases and so on, whatever practicalities. So, I think sometimes using words in not a very accurate fashion misleads people, and so we may need a community advisory board, and I think that's what a lot of people are saying here. But I think what you've been talking all along, because I also thought, you know, what do you mean "community advisory" without public participation and meetings and everything in secret? Well, what are you talking about?
The report says Criminal Justice Advisory.
Right, but what we've been talking about, and what's in the paper and so on, and it's not advisory, you're talking about a management, they're advising anybody, they're running the system.
Advising each other.
Yeah, so forget advisory, and forget community, which was my problem, it's criminal. Okay, it's a criminal justice, but I think partly it's just talking about what you meant. And what you meant is, how do you manage the jail? And then we may need a community advisory board, but let's separate the two things.
Okay, good point. Okay, helpful because the report isn't clear enough, apparently.
Chris?
I'll be, I'll be very brief, Cal. You've, you've got a problem here, it's a tough problem to solve. It's pretty clear from the people in this room and the people we've heard from for over a year on this issue, there's a lot of expertise in this community, there are a lot of people who feel strongly, and surprisingly, are surprisingly optimistic about the ability of this body and other government bodies in this county to address these issues, racial disparity, you know, mental health treatment in the jail, medical treatment in the jail, so forth. But I think there needs to be universal understanding. I mean, the justice system has specific statutory requirements, and no matter what you recommend, no matter what the county board does, you know, a citizen is not going to be sitting next to the judge with their own gavel dispensing justice. We're not going to have a citizen panel sitting in the office of the state's attorney deciding, "Well, we want to charge this guy and not charge this guy." I mean, it's just not going to happen. It's Constitution, it's illegal, and it's illegal for a good reason. I mean, there were towns in the Wild West where they dispensed justice that way, and I think we're all happy that those days are over. But I think what we do have an opportunity to do is get your input into how to create a system in which we do take advantage of the expertise in the community, we do have flows of information, we do talk about these issues, other than once every fifteen or twenty years, when somebody points out a facilities problem. And we try to look at how to take advantage of the expertise in this community to make sure that we are administering justice in the most effective way. And I think the county board has a role to play in that. You know, I'm not going to say this is just a facilities issue, this is, you want to kick this to the state's attorney, kick this to the judge, our hands are tied, we can't do anything. I think we can do something. But keep in mind what our limitations are, find a way that we can use that community input, and create a positive environment that builds this trust, that builds this trust in the law enforcement community, that builds this trust in the justice system, but still allows people who we have in those, elected officials we have in those roles to do their jobs.
I resemble those remarks.
Behind us here, Astrid Burges.
The, your Criminal Justice Management Committee is the three elected people who have their own budgets. And the defense isn't represented, they don't have their own budget, but it seems to me that that committee ought to include the public defender somewhere along the way. They should have a voice in the management of the criminal justice system. And I think it would be nice if they had an independent budget as well.
Let me comment just very briefly. The defense, the defense and their budget and their position in the criminal justice system, I have read in the report. Y'all know that. And I'm struggling with it because there are laws, per Chris's comment, and there are personalities and politics, and there is the reality of the defense, I mean, I've been a prosecutor, I've been a judge, I've been a defense, I've been a lot of things in this world, including late to work, but the issue here is, if I'm a defense attorney, if I'm the public defender, now, that's not the guy that is the public defender, but if it's Cal, I'm not sitting on that board. That's a conflict of interest with my clients. And so, it's a wicked, wicked planning problem, but I hear you, and I, I'm going to work on it. I hear that defense is an issue here, I do hear that, and the citizenship input, access, transparency, availing oneself of the talent in the community, and the obvious goodwill and constructivity that is represented by all this energy, is my challenge. So, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that, but there's more to it than just, well, put Randy on the committee, you know?
Right, young lady back there.
Can I just jump in?
Come on, come on up, come on up.
Randy is involved, is on the team.
What's that? I'm sorry, Julia?
I just, Randy is on the team.
On what team?
In the proposed CJAB or in our conversations.
You mean you and Dan and Tom, also, me, with Randy on this side?
Sure, absolutely.
Right, okay, so that's helpful.
I don't want it to look like Randy's excluded.
All right, please keep your choice possible.
Okay. Yes, I was going to...
Just respond to the question that Cal...
Right.
...out there.
I am. I was, all that whole series of people who you named, who are various types of citizen, the idea that I had about it is that it would be all of that whole range of people, but just change them out often.
Change them out often?
Yes.
A rotating panel of people representing different islands of interest in the citizenry aimed at the criminal justice. The problem with that one, as I love in theory, is the practicality of mounting it, or making it work, the scheduling and the agenda, and, so, but I take your point.
People would do it, though. People would do it, though, because they have an interest.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kilbar.
I can't believe, I can't believe I created a second meeting.
I will be, yeah, what are you doing? But anyway, thank you very much for your patience. I will try to talk fast and briefly, yes.
Before you tell me anything, do you have any idea what the score of the Warrior game was?
No, I don't know, sorry. I haven't been, I don't have the smartphone. Somebody ought to be able to do that. Okay, the question, I, I mean, I totally, I totally agree with the points Chris that Chris made. I mean, we don't need citizens to micromanage, you know, the daily affairs of what's, of what's going on. But, so, I think a couple of the things that have been suggested, that is, members of the, of this management committee from, from the, from the residents is one. Another would be an advisory body that would have some kind of, that the CJAB would have some accountability for, too. But a couple of things, one is the existing CJAB.
Wait, I'm going to step in here. Are you saying that this advisory for, that the management team is accountable to the advisory board, the public advisory board?
I'm saying, not that it's accountable in the sense of a hierarchical...
Authority.
Hierarchical authority, but it is, but an advisory board is, is something that you, that doesn't direct your, your work, but you, but advises you and, and receives report back from you.
Gets to comment.
Yeah, yeah. So, but, but the existing CJAB seems to have a narrower purview than what you're talking about, because you're talking about a CJAB that would actually, in my understanding, be responsible for the implementation of the entire action plan. I mean, that's, that's kind of what it, that's...
That's a great point to make.
Okay, that's, that's, I wanted some...
I think that there are circles of responsibility. This board is responsible for what, a lot of pieces of the action plan. There are other entities outside of CJAB and this board that would be responsible for implementation of certain parts of the action. Some of it is city stuff, some of it is community stuff. So, it's a good point that you make, and I can sort of see some graphics that might help clear this up a little bit.
Okay. Now, one other point, and I will finish. There is, there's an intermediate step, which seems to me where some different form of resident input might be helpful, and that is, the CJAB needs to have some kind of, you've mentioned this, it needs to have some kind of mission, some kind of principles, vision, whatever kinds of things that are going to be involved. And that could be a more public process with more participation to agree on that, and then that body would disappear, but those, but whatever the missions or the agreed-upon principles, those would, those would remain. And that's a way of having some public participation without constricting the ability of that body to function.
I, I, I will say that that's too awkward to actually work, although it's gorgeous, elegant theory.
No, it's not that awkward.
But, but, but it's, it's not workable quite that way, because you end up giving elected officials who have the constitutional authority, your authority, to define their mission, or at least put yourself in that spot. It's very awkward. But, but what I will say is, if there's going to be some more public hearings or meetings with or without Cal, and maybe there'd be a good one to have without Cal, because he talks a lot, that you might want to sort of sit and have a meeting where you say, "What is the purpose of the jail in Champaign County in 2013? What ought to be the way that people spend their money to build, or fix, or expand, or contract, or use, employ a jail?" Because the purpose, the mission of the jail is so instrumental, there's so many of the questions, and alternatives, and programs, and policies, and procedures, and it never quite ever gets really addressed. And so, setting up some sort of forum where people, broader than the most passionate people, Joe Lunchpail, so to speak, who doesn't come to these meetings, and... people, Joe Lunchpail, so to speak, who doesn't come to these meetings, and, and, et cetera, did I say something?
Mr. Jay has a report for you, I think.
No, I don't have it.
I thought it was about the game.
I don't know.
Oh, gee.
They haven't started yet, we're in the central time zone.
Oh, sorry.
It's 9:30.
Oh, that's wonderful news, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, I thought, I thought he was talking about the game, but he said overtime, so I think he's talking about us.
Besides the energy in this room, that's the second best thing that's happened all day. So, look, I appreciate your comment, and you can see that I got stuff to work out.
Right.
And I want to repeat again, because I think we're getting close to the close.
Yeah, we're closing. This will be the last.
Y'all have my email or availability to get it, and I'm not closed to anything that anybody can say to me.
One other question from the board.
This is maybe more of a general comment, and it probably should have been made at the beginning. I, I think we need to really be serious about what we're doing here, because, you know, of all the things this board tends to argue over, the power of the state to incarcerate its citizens is probably the greatest thing next to the war powers that the federal government has. So we need to take this with a lot of gravity. The idea that this meeting has lasted three hours does not scare me in the least, because I think this meeting, this stuff is important enough that we should not be rushing it, rushing people out of their seats, trying to act like, you know, the comments are taking too long, and that we need to rush out of here so we can go home, I think is irresponsible, and it probably adds to the idea among the public that we're railroading this whole process a little bit. So I would encourage the board to slow down that idea.
I'm sorry. We've given everyone the chance here to speak, would, please, tell me, have I rushed anyone here?
And again, I'm being interrupted by the chairman as I speak, so I will remind people of that.
Okay, now, I feel that everyone has had a chance to speak. We could have spent a five-minute time limit on everyone here if we wanted to, under the rules, but I gave everyone a chance to, to speak their mind, and we extended it, it could have ended at eight o'clock, we extended it till nine o'clock, and let anyone else speak and come up here and answer Cal's question. So I want to thank everyone in this room who's come here, I want to thank all of the board members who've taken their time and spent it, I want to thank Dan and Julia for coming here. I'm going to hit Cal on the head, so we can get him here again. I want to thank Cal for doing an extraordinary job. Can we please? Thank you very much. And I will take exception to any personal attacks, I promise you that. So, thank you very much. I call for a German, please. May I have a German? A German. Thank you. Stan? Aaron? We're adjourned.
There you go, folks.
I'm going to give a gavel.